Like any other place, it also has its problems. Depending on the study of fish-
Dogs, they're middle-aged, they have a lot of good years left to go, and they're very well behaved. As you can see, they're sitting here nicely. They're just a lot of fun, and they'd really like to go home together, but it's not absolutely necessary. If you really have your heart set on one, we can separate them, but as I said, it would be just so nice to keep them together. They do go along well with other dogs. Gypsy sometimes likes to know another dog before she wants to play with her, but they are very nice dogs together, and they'd be a lot of fun for you to take home. And remember, if you're even not in the market for adopting a dog right now, you can help out the Humane Society by coming down and volunteering. If you're looking to lose a little weight or you want to start a new exercise program, we've got a wonderful idea for you. Come and be a dog walker. We especially need dog walkers during the midweek or midweek evenings. We need people to just come and walk one dog at a time, and the dogs love the chance to get out of the pen, and you'll love the exercise that you'll get, and you'll love the good feeling that you'll get by getting the dogs out of the pen because they get so happy to see someone to love. They really want the attention. They'll really appreciate it, and you'll feel good about yourself. So give us a call at (240) 773-5967, or visit us on the web at mchumane.org. You'll definitely want to come down and meet Boomer and Gypsy.
And finally, the council will be holding its second teen town hall meeting on Wednesday, October 12th. The forum will be held at the council office building and will begin at 7:30 PM. Young people of all ages are encouraged to come and ask the questions about their county and the issues most important to them. Well, that does it for this edition of County Report this week. Be sure to tune in again next week for a look at what's going on in side Montgomery County. I'm Susan Kennedy. Thanks for watching.
Call this meeting in Tacoma Park City Council order. Clerk please call the hall.
Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
President?
Councilmember Sniper?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here. Okay. There are no additional agenda items this evening. Just a quick scheduling update on upcoming meetings. Next week, Monday, October 3rd, we're going to have work session discussions on the Discussion Division for the Sustainability Coordinator and Continued Discussion Division for City Recreation Services. The following Monday, the 10th, we'll have a first reading ordinance on the amendments to the Ethics Code that we had a session on a couple of weeks ago. And we'll also be having a first reading on authorizing installation of traffic coming measures on Hilltop Road. The following Monday, the 17th, we're scheduled for a continued discussion of city committees that keeps getting postponed. Nothing I wanted to particularly call out about the 24th and a reminder that October 31st and November 7th, there will be no council meetings. At this point, we'll go to public comment, and this is a chance to comment on anything that is not on our regular meeting agenda. So any voting session item at the beginning of the meeting and the public hearing, we'll take comments when we get to those. But if you have any comments on anything not on the agenda or anything on our work session agenda items at the end of the meeting, which is the briefing on the State Highway Administration MOU and discussion placing an advisory question on the ballot, we'll take those questions now.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to offer public comment. And I'll start by thanking you once again for the resolution to extend the Tacoma Junction Task Force, of which I'm co-chair. That will, the extension will allow us to take care of some essentially design items and coordination items that we won't have had time to reach by the normal expiration of the task force. So that's good. As task force members, of course, we're very concerned that the recommendations and evaluation we put forward get the full consideration of the council. We know that that is to come. I am concerned, however, that past recommendations and evaluations put forward by city committees and task forces have not received the consideration that they're due. I'm thinking in particular of a greenhouse gas task force that was convened in the year 2000 and issued a report. Mayor Williams, you were part of that, as were members of city staff, including the city Public Works Director, Daryl Braithwaite, and, ooh, I'm forgetting who else. Anyway, that laid out goals for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in the city by, to 1990 levels by the year 2010. We made very, very spotty progress on that. In addition, the city council chartered an environmental task force that made a whole bunch of recommendations, very few of which have received the consideration that they were due, much less in implementation. I really wonder about these background points in connection to the proposed resolution to go on the ballot for refer- I'm sorry, referendum to go on the ballot about environmentalism. We have no shortage of environmentalists in the city of Tacoma Park, and I think it's pretty much a no-brainer that the vast majority of people here support environmentalism, including greenhouse gas emission reductions. The question, of course, becomes trade-off in priorities, and perhaps some of these earlier efforts got lost in the priorities and the cost and all of that kind of stuff. But all the same, we have no shortage of direction on environmental questions in general. So I really do question having the referendum on the ballot. I have to say, while it's great that the initiative was made, Councilmember Wright, I wonder about the particular referendum also in that it calls for measurement, which we've done some of in the past, rather than very concrete actions. If you do wish to put a referendum on the ballot, I would suggest one that is much more concrete in terms of city action. One that would, for instance, call on the city of Tacoma Park, the council administration, to consider environmental and energy impact, not just greenhouse gases, as a consideration in all procurement actions in any kind of building that the city does and supplies that the city acquires and those kind of things. Bake that into city law via the charter, rather than just calling for measurements and actions that would be taken by unspecified parties. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come?
It's not working. Okay. Satyevan E. Kalksa, 6719 Conway Avenue. I'm here to speak about the greenhouse gas referendum. And while I don't expect everyone tonight, speaking about this, to fully be supportive of the concept, I expect the majority of the people to have a shared concern for improving the environment and getting the city to take more direct action regarding the climate. A lot of the effort tonight could be spent regarding specifics of the best strategy, or the language, or the legal ramifications of a referendum, which will all likely change along with fickle changes in the economy, energy prices, and the weather. I would like you to listen, as good councils will, for where there's consensus so you can bring ideas and supporters together towards a common goal. Thus, I'll put forth the following proposal, the hope that you can use it and the other feedback you get tonight to construct an appropriate tool to gauge the support of the voters, and then take action to implement their desire to see more active, consistent, and effective action on climate change. So number one, I'd like to consider making an ordinance similar to the tree protection law and stormwater ordinance, which will put climate change on the same level, if not a higher level, of priority for the city. Up till now, we've been stuttering our way through effective action via various committees, task force, action plans, resolutions, and reports, and it's time to put this goal firmly into city policy. Second point, assuming what you need is feedback from the electorate, go ahead and create a ballot question for November 8th that will help get you past any hesitations you have about proceeding. And number three, once you get the results from the ballot question, act promptly to implement the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association, and I just wanted to announce for the public record and extend an invitation for the Tacoma Park Street Festival, which will be occurring this Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Carroll Avenue, and it's the 30th year for the festival. Highlights this year, we've got 220 booths, which I think is one of the largest. We've got a Chevy Volt electric car coming. Our recycle art of bike sculptures will be auctioned off at the street festival. We'll have a large street mural called Chalk for Peace, part of an international group doing a giant street mural that kids will participate in. And we've got the usual music. We've got 18 bands on three stages. So hopefully, we'll see everybody there. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Lord Charcutian. I live on Ethan Allen Avenue, which is Route 410, and that was the first thing I wanted to talk about. So as I've mentioned a couple of times, Route 410, of course, is extremely important because it's to me and my neighbors where we raise our children and our families. It's a gateway to the city, and when it's bad, it increases cut-through traffic through all of the surrounding neighborhoods. And the idling cars on 410 affect the air quality in the city. So for all those reasons, I'm delighted that you are making this a priority again in these negotiations with S.H.A. In reviewing the proposal, there's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight and recommend. The first was, it's not clear how, I guess in the MOU you'll detail the specifics about maintenance. But I think that it'd be important to have something about the standards for maintenance and the avenues for redress if maintenance is not conducted up to par. That's obviously been a problem over the years. And it's not clear what avenues the city, well, residents and then the city would have if it's not up to par. Again, I'm delighted, and please hold on to the city's involvement in permitting, and I'm hoping that no permits can get through that the city doesn't approve. I understand it's joint permitting, but I'm hoping that means that the city has veto power in that. And point F about the lights, I think that that needs to be a very detailed agreement in the MOU, the Junction Task Force and here with you. We've been wrestling with how do we get S.H.A. to fix these lights in an appropriate way. So I think specifically, we need, excuse me, in the MOU, a regular contact person who has the ability to make the changes to the light timing. A commitment from S.H.A. to work with the city to determine optimal light timing, including different timing for different times of day. A commitment to use computerized traffic simulations before changing the light patterns, and a commitment to review changes within 48 hours after the change to determine if there have been any unforeseen problems and reverse the changes immediately if there have. And the whole sycamore light dangerous sort of situation, I think, is an example of why that needs to be in there. And since the Tacoma Junction Task Force is preparing several other recommendations, I'm wondering if at this point, while you're negotiating with S.H.A., if you can include in the MOU a commitment to work with the city to consider those other options that are possibly coming down the line. And then the last thing was, it's not clear. Sidewalk maintenance, I didn't see was clearly articulated here. I'm hoping that will be in the MOU, but that seems like it's an important thing to include in there. And I know in the sidewalk discussions, it's been, there's been some confusion about whether the city or S.H.A. is responsible for sidewalk maintenance. And then in the last 30 seconds, I'm happy mostly to see the discussion about greenhouse gas emissions and making the environment a priority. Whether you ultimately decide that a ballot initiative is the right way to go or as a council you set a mandate, I think it is crucial that we start measuring greenhouse gas emissions and setting the goals for reduction and setting the plan. I think the most important thing is to start taking action. And if it's a ballot initiative that will help do that, then I would absolutely support that.
Thank you.
Hello, Robert Lanza, 7215 Cedar Avenue. I had some questions concerning the greenhouse gas emissions referendum. First, is the exact wording of the referendum already developed in what I'm reading here on the page of the agenda? Or is that wording still to be developed, but will actually be on the ballot?
We haven't discussed it, so we have no idea if we put something on the ballot, whether that'll be the language or not.
Okay, so this language is just descriptive. This is not actual ballot language that we would see here.
Not yet.
Okay. The other question I had is, what is the meaning of an advisory question? Meaning suppose the advisory question passes, what does that either require or encourage or recommend that the council do? How is that advisory versus any other type of referendum or direction?
It's basically, it advises the council, the council would have to act. It doesn't set anything.
Okay, so it's purely an advisory in the general interpretation of the word advisory?
Yes, and we'll get an explanation of the legal interpretation of what we can and can't do when we get to that item.
Okay. Last question, Seth Grimes was up here, and he mentioned a couple of things concerning previous initiatives that have been undertaken with respect to environment and environmentalism. And one of the things that I would suggest is that when you go through with the referendum, if it passes and you start working on it, to try to roll up a lot of the initiatives that have been going on in terms of sustainability and environment into kind of a package to get some of the recommendations that have previously been recommended implemented. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and members of the council. My name's Tim Mail, 7003 Woodland Avenue. And I'm also here to comment on the referendum question. I would encourage you to put a question, some sort of question like that, as an advisory question on the ballot. I know that city staff and the city's legal counsel has raised some issues around it being a straw vote question, whether the city really has powers to address this problem. And I think there are probably ways you can deal with the language to work around that. I think there are things that, as many of you know, the city can do that affect our, the pollution, the air pollution that comes from Tacoma Park. So I would urge you to put it on the ballot. In particular, I think it's a really nice example of the sort of way that you bring in community, broad community engagement into a question of a direction. Which direction should we go? And in this case, it sets, you know, a general direction, which is to reduce pollution, reduce air pollution from the source. It doesn't script the moves. It doesn't say that, you know, one department in the city has to do something specific. It leaves that flexibility to you and to city staff, but it gives you a sense of what the community thinks and really the city's commitment to it. I agree with earlier comments that many people in Tacoma Park support, you know, greenhouse gas, the people addressing greenhouse gas pollution. But it's a little harder when it's put right there in front of you on a ballot. Do you want our city government to work hard on this issue? And so you're really presenting that question to them, I think, in a harder way, and it's a great opportunity to get that. There's a risk that people will say no, but that's what democracy is all about. If people say no, they say no. And then we have to respect that as a community and as a city government. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to council comments. Councilmember Sniper.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure this weekend of attending the celebrations of the 50th anniversary of the Peace Corps. And it was an opportunity to see many people from Tacoma Park. May not be aware that Tacoma Park is a hotbed of former Peace Corps volunteers. The city is just chocolate block with them. They're crawling all over everywhere. Be careful, your neighbors might be one. But in all seriousness, it was, for me, a very moving occasion to see an organization that has devoted itself to peace in general and through a very specific people-to-people kind of method. About 200,000 Peace Corps volunteers have served in something like 138 different countries. And they essentially provide a couple, three things, I think. They devote themselves to kind of mutual understanding, people learning about other cultures and other cultures learning about us. They actually do some projects, underfunded as they are and small as they are. They help Americans learn about other countries and other cultures, which I think is really essential. We tend to be fairly insular about other countries. And finally, we bring all that home, Peace Corps volunteers, then for the rest of their lives. It is a life-changing thing. Talk about it with their friends, family, neighbors, et cetera. If you are interested in serving in the Peace Corps, please contact me. I'll be happy to give you a great sales pitch. And if you know a volunteer, please, who's out there in the field, please support them. Some of them can be very lonely. They're in very obscure places. I know it seems like everyone has a cellphone and internet access, but that's actually not really true. Anyway, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Councilmember Clay?
I turned 47 this week. And in my ongoing effort to reclaim, thank you. In my ongoing effort to reclaim my life, my family asked me what I wanted to do for my birthday, and I made them help me clean my garage, which was really fun because when I cleaned the garage, I discovered that I actually owned three Sanders and three drills, which I'm sure that I bought and replaced them because I needed a Sander or a drill, and I couldn't find mine. So I'm kind of excited about that. So this is my update from reclaiming my life. I also wanted to say that so far, the Tacoma Park community has donated $3,000 to the Orlando, I can't remember his name now.
Hernandez.
Hernandez, thank you. Fund, and I'm turning over the money to CASA tomorrow, and they're going to make a donation as well. And folks can do the text donation through the 29th. So let me know if you're interested. And the last thing is that I got a call from Councilmember Siemens this week. And he asked me to think about the recreation department and incorporating life skills into the recreation department and maybe rethink my position on that. And so this is, and we're going to talk about it next week, but I just want to share with some of the council members what I've been thinking about it, and that is that I'm still not interested in changing the name of the department to the Department of Recreation, Art, and Life Skills. But I think that one of the things that we've been saying when we've been talking about recreation is that we don't want to do more in this area because it's something that we don't get a rebate for. And I think that's actually an unfair characterization of how we operate here because the fact is, we do a lot of things that we don't get rebates for. Recreation would be one of those things that we do that we don't get rebates for. We don't get rebates for economic development. It doesn't, when we do economic development, it doesn't accrue a lot of money to us. The changes in sales tax actually accrue to the county. We don't get rebates for the, most of the environmental activities that we engage in. And so I think that when we have the conversation again next week, I think it's fair to talk about how we would provide services around life skills activities that are needed in the community, just like we provide lots of other kinds of things that are demanded by other folks in the community. And I think it's important to note that a lot of the things that we do that we don't get rebates for are, tend to be demanded by more affluent people in our community. And, you know, those are people who vote, and those are people who come out and speak a lot of times, and that we really need to think about how we're going to provide for all of the community. And I think it's fair to have that conversation related to recreation and how we want to serve all of our constituents because I think that improving the lives of all of the folks in Tacoma Park should be an important goal. And I think that the recreation department is absolutely a venue through which we can accomplish that goal together. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Clay, for giving consideration to our discussion.
I just wanted to let everybody know that Pat Lovelace is not with us tonight. He's the peace delegate that's here for most council meetings because last Tuesday night, he fell down and got a compound fracture of his leg in his apartment. He's now in suburban hospital. Broke his leg in two places. So he'll be assured that he will be back with us just as soon as he recovers and can get around. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Schultz?
I have three things. First of all, I want to thank the Tacoma Park Police Department for finding and arresting the people who are apparently responsible for all the crazy shootings, sort of aimless shootings, that were besetting Ward 6 and also other parts of the city as well over the last two weeks. It scared a lot of people, particularly in my ward because we had at least two instances, either in the ward or just on the PG side within, so it was effectively in our ward. And I had sent an email to my constituents showing them that the police department was probably going to get them if for no other reason that the stupid idiots who do this sort of thing can't resist keeping on doing it until they finally get themselves caught. And sure enough, that's exactly what happened. And I, and the department has reaffirmed my confidence in them. Second, I just want to thank the Department of Public Works real quickly for what they're doing in getting the circle repaired and replanted at the intersection of Kennewick and Kirkland since an 18-wheel truck decided to use it as a pit stop for some reason. It's looking terrific, and thanks for them. The other thing is that I want to use this opportunity, if you'll bear with me tonight, to publicly, to honor in a public forum my daughter, who just died four days ago. I don't know what I'm going to say. I didn't want to waste time putting words down on paper because it would be a waste of time. And I'm not just saying these words publicly to attract sympathy or pity or whatever you want to call it. Because if that was the case, then I wouldn't say a word. But I do it to honor her memory because she, not because she was my daughter, actually, she's my stepdaughter, but just because of who she was. And like any proud parent, you sort of want to let the world know who your offspring are. Laurie died Thursday after a 29-month battle with metastatic colon cancer that had invaded its liver before the medical people had discovered that what was wrong. Unfortunately, they had misdiagnosed it and thought it was lactose intolerance, and so she was on a diet for a year. And, but everybody makes mistakes. Just doctors make mistakes and politicians make mistakes, and everybody else in between too. Laura, or Laurie, as we call her, was one of my wife Nancy's four children, three girls and a boy. Unfortunately, Nancy lost her son in 1995. But that's another story for another time. So this is her second child that she's lost. And we're doing okay. Everybody should just know that we're doing okay. So don't worry about me, for Pete's sakes. Laura was vice, worked for the Enterprise Community Partners in Columbia, Maryland. Originally, it was founded by James Rouse as the Enterprise Foundation. The organization is probably the most prominent organization in the United States working on behalf of and in the development of affordable housing. She was vice president of Knowledge, Impact, and Strategy. There was not, she wasn't, there was many of vice presidents. But she was a very influential person throughout the nation with regard to the world of affordable housing. And like most parents, once your kids get up into their 30s and 40s, they start having a world of their own, that networking professionally and work-wise and developing their own skills. And as parents, you don't sort of say, well, how was work- And as parents, you don't sort of say, "Well, how was work today, honey?" Because you don't see them that often, and usually, you know, that's not what you talk about around the dinner table or at occasions when you get together. But we're coming to find out that people at the Enterprise Community Partners were profoundly affected by her loss, and that's been very touching for us. I'm not really sure what else needs to be said, except that her death was entirely expected. She realized as recently as three or four months ago that—what her destiny was. But she was lucid to the last minute, and she passed away at home, in her bed, with her mother and her two sisters and her husband right next to her. And I was not there, because I was out collecting her children from school. She has two sons, who are eleven and fifteen. And the thing that I guess I want to say in closing is that, as—you know, being so much older than her, I always saw myself as a stepfather, as sort of being kind of a mentor to her. I didn't have a daughter of my own. I just had two sons. But now that I've observed her wrestle with this situation and how she handled herself over these last twenty-nine months, when—since she was first diagnosed, I've realized that I've been the one who's been learning from her about how to live life and how to deal with the end of life. And I just—that's primarily the reason that I want to publicly honor her, because she taught all of us—and I mean the family and those who worked for her at Enterprise and her friends and her sons and her husband—how you deal with something like this. I am just so awed, stand in such awe of this young lady who we lost, and it's been a powerful learning experience for me. And of course, I am filled with a lot of heavy emotions, as obviously anybody would understand, and the fact that I'm standing here being calm and collected about it is doesn't tell you anything, because obviously, we understand—being here is kind of a nice distraction from our situation. So thank you for the opportunity to say these words and to honor my stepdaughter, Laura Elizabeth McGrath. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schultz, for sharing those thoughts. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Fred. I think I speak for all the council members when we say that we're terribly sorry for your loss. I never met Laurie, but knowing you and Nancy, I'm sure she was an amazing person and a great contributor to our world, and your loss is our loss as well.
Thanks. Thanks.
On October 4th, we will have the nominating caucus here, so I would encourage everybody to come. That's at 7:30. And nominate your friends, family members, or community members who you think would make great city council members or mayors, and encourage them to run in the coming election. I'll be here. I always find it to be an exciting and interesting evening, so I encourage others to be here. And then I just want to mention on October 15th that the Tacoma Foundation is holding its third annual Beer Fest at the Katie Lee Mansion on October 15th. And at the Street Festival—the Coming Street Festival this weekend—is one of the places you can buy tickets for that. The Tacoma Foundation is a local foundation which makes donations—it's 501(c)(3) that makes donations to local efforts and causes and has a grants process. So I'd encourage people to go to the Beer Fest, whether you drink beer or not, to support the Tacoma Foundation, and also enjoy the Katie Lee Mansion, which is a wonderful historic structure and building that resides just across the border in DC. Lastly, I just want to suggest and remind people—it's been a while since we actually had the conversation about Racket. We didn't get to it last week. We're not going to get to it this week, but we'll have it next week. To reread the memo on that, it really lays out the presentation and then incorporates as much as possible the comments from the Recreation Committee. And I think there are a few outstanding issues that we—that the memo doesn't remain totally silent on, but doesn't take a strong position on, one of which is the name of the department. I think the council's still undecided on that issue. And the second thing is, I think, to have a healthy discussion about the role of life skills and the element of whether that can be integrated into programming that we have already in a way that delivers the programming and also teaches kids those critical skills, or if they need to be specific classes dedicated to life skills. So I look forward to that healthy debate next week, and also look forward to us as a council moving forward with being able to give the staff clear direction on what we'd like related to recreation programming.
Councilmember Robinson.
Condolences, Fred.
Thank you.
My sister was in town over the weekend for the 50th anniversary of the Peace Corps, and she had a wonderful time and saw people that she really—that are clearly meaningful to her after this—after a good, long while. There was one other thing I wanted to mention, and that is that I believe on October 27th, at Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, they're going to consider the naming and dedicating policies for parks in the county. And one of the criteria for dedications will be that people can—that parks can be dedicated to people for their community service. And I believe that our resolution recommending that Gilbert Con Bay be—that what's currently known as the Tacoma Urban Park be renamed, or in this case, dedicated to Gilbert Con Bay, would be something that would be appropriate under that clause in the upcoming policy recommendations by staff. And I believe that if that policy, as written, passes at MNCPPC, it would be appropriate for us to forward the resolution as a request to the Foundation for the Park and Planning, and that we'll be successful in that. I'm hopeful that that's the case, and I just wanted to give you a heads-up, because that resolution was passed at the beginning of this year, I believe, beginning of 2011, if not the end of 2010. I can't quite remember when it was, but it's a good while back. It's not dead, and I'm hopeful that it will be a successful outcome in just a short while.
And I've just got a couple of quick items. I just wanted to thank the organizers of the Tacoma Park Play Day that occurred on Saturday at Tacoma Park Middle School. I know a lot of people went there and really enjoyed it. It was bigger and better than the last year and the year before, and I know that there were a number of events that were popular. The one that was quite obviously popular, you could tell well before you got to the event, was the Touch a Truck, which resulted in many kids touching many trucks, and I think the favorite part of their truck to touch was the horn. And at one point, one of the Recreation Department's staff was orchestrating the kids on the horns and having them play an orchestral suite on the horns. That was very interesting. And so just, again, thanks to all the people who organized that. It's a great event, and the Tacoma Park Play Committee and the Public Works and the police were there, and everybody had a great time. I encountered one woman and her son, who were reporting over the police radio that the mayor had done something, and that they were in pursuit of the mayor and needed backup. So I headed around the corner of the building, and they were enjoying the opportunity to sit in the police car and fantasize that they were Tacoma Park Police. Also enjoyed going to the Pine Crest Neighborhood's barbecue at the VFW. It was good to see a lot of new people in that neighborhood. I remarked that there were probably—I don't know—at least forty people there when I got there, and that with the exception of two or three faces, they were all new in the last couple of years. When I was a council member for Ward Three, I represented that area and went to the Neighborhood Association meetings all the time, and it was interesting to see the large turnover in that neighborhood, mostly with young kids. And finally, just a reminder that there's a new music series coming to this auditorium in the next two months, and it's the Tacoma Park Chamber Music Community Series, and it's presented by Washington Musica Viva. And there are four concerts of chamber music, October 21st and 28th, and November 4th and 18th. And anybody who wants information on that, their website is dcmusicaviva.org. And that's an opportunity for some new and different kinds of music to come into this space, and it's good to see so many different opportunities for cultural enrichment in the city. And I believe that does it for council comments. City managers' comments?
Just one brief item. Obviously, one of the priorities of the council over the years has been the preservation of the city's urban forest, and the hurricane of approximately a month ago did a lot of damage. I think the council's aware. There were a number of trees that fell. Thought it might just be helpful, very briefly, to have our arborsian, Todd Volin, come up and just sort of give you a brief assessment of how many trees actually came down and any thoughts he might have of what might have contributed to some of that damage.
Best deaths, sixty-five to seventy trees came down. And we saw two that broke. The rest had rotten roots and fell over, which is where the pre-protection plan process and pre-impact assessment process is a public safety issue, and that's how I try and enforce it. I think it's worth looking at that way. One street tree failed. One city tree failed. Brushed a house, didn't cause any harm. The rest were private trees. I think—I got called out at 1:30 Sunday morning and worked until about 5:30, and then was back out at 11 to 5 that day, trying to coordinate with Pepco, which actually worked pretty well. I had an emergency crew in town, and we ended up being able to work where our crew worked with Asbund, so that it was organized cleanup and worked fairly quickly as soon as they killed the power. I think I found nine or ten houses that were hit significantly with trees. Three on Circle, one on Poplar, two on Boyd, two on Allegheny, one on Roanoke, one on Merwood, and probably several others that were minimal damage or that weren't reported to the police or to myself. No one was hurt, although there was somebody that if they hadn't been balled before, the tree came through their bedroom ceiling, they would have been balled afterwards, caught the end of the mattress where they were sleeping, which is sort of scary. Almost everything's cleaned up, I think. I'm still getting reports, people asking to grind the stump, and they want to know whether they need a permit to take the rest of the tree down, so that's going off. And then the other issue is Mr. Hernandez and his death, which got me out of my house at 1:30 on a Saturday afternoon. Now, seeing I want to revisit again. And Mayor Williams, you mentioned the Licensed Tree Expert Law last week or the week before. I just want to remind you all that if a tree's taller than 20 feet, you have to be a licensed tree expert to work on it for money in the state of Maryland. You all can take down your own, but if you're going to pay somebody and the tree's taller than 20 feet, you have to be a licensed tree expert. I'll send you all links to the tree expert law, so that you can include it in your newsletters or listservs for your districts with a reminder. The reason Mr. Hernandez died was because he may not have known the law, and the homeowner didn't know the law, and we had somebody that was not trained or licensed to be doing the work that he was doing. And bad luck, rather than—where a lack of knowledge and bad luck are a cause of death, and I'd like to avoid that by encouraging people to use Licensed Tree Experts. Any questions?
Is there anything that you saw in the results of the various trees that come down, and are processed in people requesting permits to take trees down or requesting what they thought were, you know, the ability to take down a dead tree? Anything in looking at that, I guess, sixty-four trees that caused you to think that we needed to tweak something or that it's working or—
I really think it's working. We did have one failure in Councilmember Schultz's neighborhood, that the person that had asked for a permit back in the spring. I had issued a preliminary approval requiring replacements, and they felt unable to pay for the replacements and the removal. And it had butt rot that was concealed when I did my inspection by English ivy. And looking at the pictures, if I'd gone back out after the ivy was off, I probably would have changed my mind and issued a waiver, but that's the first tree that's failed that I've been asked to inspect in the five years that I've been here. So I really do think it works quite well. And if any of you watch TV on Sunday mornings, Energy Now at 11:30 on Channel Seven this Sunday, they're reviewing the—I want to say Earl Grant, but that's—he lives on Grant—Patrick Earl's, the solar issue. And I think they interviewed Mr. Earl, and then they interviewed myself. So we can see how we fit in to that situation.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
My question really was—you said there were sixty-four that had root failure.
Well, between sixty and seventy trees failed, yeah.
Okay. Many of them had the root failure issue. Are you saying if we didn't have the policy in place that we had where people need to have permits to work around trees, natural stuff, that that situation could be worse?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then the second question is, is there anything else we can advise people to do to avoid those situations? Do those occur just because trees get old and they happen, or there's some randomness to it, or is there something around soil treatment or watering or something that should be done differently?
Most of it's construction and construction damage or soil compact—poor soil conditions. If you've had a yard with kids playing football for a hundred years, soil gets compacted and the roots start dying. If you start to see a crown reduction, the problem is in the roots, not in the crown. And people need to be aware—and people need to be aware that they need to maintain their trees, just like they paint their house, they have to have their trees looked after. And lots of people don't get that. Determining when a tree is—has root rot is very hard to do. There has to be some signal that keys an investigator into looking at the root system, and it's hard to determine.
Thanks. And I would just say there were—maybe this wasn't on the list of houses that had hit because it was a garage as opposed to a house, or maybe you just hadn't seen it. On Maple, about halfway between Tulip and Philadelphia, Lynn Bradley's house, the garage got basically crushed in the back. The front of it looks okay still, but—and it was a uprooted tree from the side yard.
Nobody reported that one to me, yeah.
But no one was harmed—you know, it was a garage, so no one was harmed. But no one was harmed, you know, it was a garage, so no one was harmed.
Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will then move to our public hearing, and that is on the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Ms. Daines is going to introduce that item.
The purpose of the public hearing this evening is threefold. To solicit comment on the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, to identify the needs of Tacoma Park's low and moderate income households and neighborhoods, the primary beneficiary of the program, and to solicit comment on projects that have been proposed or recommended for funding through the review committee. As noted in the program guidelines, which are included with your agenda packet, the Community Development Block Grant Program provides flexible funding for a variety of projects, both capital and human services. Past projects have included the Crossroads Farmers Market, Manah Food Center, and the Tacoma Park Recreation Department Scholarship Program. Capital projects have ranged from streetscape improvements along Maple Avenue, Commercial Facade Easement Program, which we will be kicking off the end of this fiscal year, and energy conservation improvements at various multifamily properties in Tacoma Park. What I'd like to point out are, and there's a more complete listing of all of the projects that have been funded over the last ten or eleven years on pages ten and eleven of the guidelines I referenced earlier. This year, the review committee met and reviewed, we received six applications and are making, will be making recommendations to the city council later in October for funding for food safety class that'll be sponsored by the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church in partnership with the Crossroads Market and the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Cooperative in the amount of $4,000, which would benefit an estimated eight individuals. Montgomery Housing Partnership's Preschool Homework Club and Summer Enrichment Program for roughly seventeen children between the ages of three and twelve years old that live at the property on Maple and Ritchie Avenue in Ward Four and Gilbert Highlands in Ward Five. They're also recommending funding for a community bridges program that is targeted for at-risk girls with low immigrant backgrounds, low-income and immigrant backgrounds that attend school at the Tacoma Park Middle School, and that's to reduce rates of pregnancy, dropout from school, and gang involvement. A fourth project that's been proposed for recommendation is with the District of Columbia's Baptist Convention, which would address the abatement of identified code violations in single-family homeowners' properties. And the last project that has been, we received an application for that the review committee is recommending funding is a Smart Choices with Emotions Program sponsored by the YMCA that, again, is targeted for students at the Tacoma Park Middle School, this time boys, that are at risk of suspension or other disciplinary action. Apparently, the Tacoma Park Middle School has the highest rate of suspensions in Montgomery County, and this program would be focused on preventing that. Of the applications, they're recommending roughly, or $25,000 in public service projects and $40,000 in capital projects, which would be for the Baptist Convention with the repairs to single-family homeowners' property, and are suggesting that the balance of the funds available for capital projects be allocated for the Commercial Facade Program, which was approved last year. We would fold the two program years into a single project, allowing us to provide a larger impact on commercial properties in CDBG-eligible areas, which would include the Tacoma Junction area, the commercial property in Tacoma Park that's located in Long Branch Neighborhood, properties along Holton, excuse me, New Hampshire Avenue up by the Crossroads Area, and again over by the Maryland Gateway.
And the Maryland Gateway on New Hampshire?
On New Hampshire Avenue, right by the district line.
Thanks. We'll now open the public hearing for any comments. There was a sign-up sheet. Did anybody sign up? Did anybody, should be over there?
I also forgot, there isn't a list, but I know there are some people here.
Oh, okay.
I also forgot to acknowledge Andy Kellerman, who is one of the members of the review committee that is here this evening.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody who'd like to testify about the CDBG programs and the proposals?
So, I'm Lauren Charcutian, still, and I'm talking about the commercial kitchen for the community. Been working on behalf of the co-op with Vicki at the Presbyterian Church, she's over there, and Michelle with the Crossroads Market. And we've been working on looking at how we support building local food system in a way that really benefits the broader community and specifically the lower moderate income community. And so this is an exciting piece of the puzzle, the $4,000 for the food safety classes. The local food system in general is, of course, a benefit to the economy. Money spent locally stays locally. Tying together the microenterprise development and the programs like the one that you heard from last week, the potential funders, and a commercial kitchen and these classes, it has the ability to create good jobs or supplement income for low and moderate income folks. It's a benefit to the environment. It has the ability to reduce food miles if we can do our own value-added foods locally with food that has been grown locally, and then we sell it locally. It reduces food miles. And then finally, it's a benefit to everybody's bodies when we eat it, because food processed locally is less likely to be heavily processed and include fewer additives and much less likely to have high-fructose corn syrup in it. So this particular grant is, the $4,000 would go to support low and moderate income individuals to be prepared, to prepare foods in commercial kitchens when they become available or the ones that are available. There's several folks working to organize the kitchen aspect of it, and so this will allow folks to be ready to do that. So, and I just would also add, the co-op specifically has offered to provide space free of charge, so that's the in-kind piece of the puzzle. And so thanks for considering it, and I hope you'll fund it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to testify at the public hearing on the CDBG project?
Hi, I'm Michelle Levy with the Crossroads Farmers Market. It's good to see you all again. Just wanted to thank you for considering the application and also to let you know that the impetus for our involvement with this project is that we're approached almost weekly at market by unemployed and underemployed residents of the Crossroads area who are looking to sell food at the market or looking to generate additional revenue for their families. Unfortunately, without access to commercial kitchen space, we're unable to sell their goods at market. So this seemed like a perfect trifecta of players coming to the table, that the church has this kitchen space that's available, and obviously, the first step in moving forward and advancing this vision of microenterprise in the community and a commercial kitchen would be to have skills training and food safety classes available for these residents. So we're excited to hopefully move forward with that first step, and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify at the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing. And that's, this is on the agenda to come back in a couple of weeks.
I believe it's in later in October.
Okay. Sometime in a couple of weeks before this current council finishes our term and our work, this, like a number of items, we're trying to finish up.
Do we get to ask questions at that point?
Yes. Okay, then we'll move to our first regular meeting agenda item, which is a resolution establishing a redistricting task force and providing for appointment of members. Would somebody like to move?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Clay. Is there council discussion? Councilmember Clay?
Actually, that was from the last item.
I'll just ask one kind of procedural question. As we're moving to appoint people to committees and commissions, and as we get closer to the time for the elections, there's the possibility that some people who are either currently on committees or task forces or who are being appointed to them may in fact end up on this council. And I'm assuming that what they would need to do, if that is the case, is that they would need to resign from whatever it is that they're on, and then if we have additional appointments for this or anything else, that we could name additional people in the future.
Typically, that's been the practice, that sitting council members do not serve on committees. There's not a prohibition, and I think it would be really your practice that would determine that.
Okay.
They're not, a seated council member is not permitted to sit on an adjudicatory body such as COLTA or the tree commission.
Okay. So there's a differentiation?
But that is a practice.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any council questions or comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move to the next item, which is a resolution supporting participation in Sustainable Maryland Certified Maryland Government Certification Program. And let me just say that, okay, go ahead. Want to move it?
I would like to move it.
Go ahead.
Second.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Siemens. This is a program that has been set up and started a couple of months ago in the state of Maryland. It's modeled on a program that is sustainable in New Jersey that's had some really good results. I was one of the founding mayors of this organization, and I was the founding mayor at the request and the push of my colleagues on the council who said, this is a no-brainer for Tacoma Park. We want to do this. And so it's nice to finally get to the point where the program is up and running, and we'll have the opportunity to become members and become certified, and it's a long process, but I think this will be excellent in helping us be more sustainable. Councilmember Robinson?
There's a green team that gets created. I know that there are a number of elements that you can, if you adhere to those, if you get checks in the boxes, you build towards becoming a sustainable community. Who's responsible, do you remember, or do you know who's responsible for being on the green team and following along and doing the analysis and checking the boxes and reporting back?
The person, the person who, the initial point person for all of this is the city manager, and then the city manager can designate somebody else, but in terms of the green team, we would need to come up with people and appoint them, and that can be pretty much anybody. And in terms of the, kind of the taking responsibility for it, I see it as the council has interest in this, the staff has interest in this, and residents will have interest in this. We'll have to come up with an organization principle that works so that we can put together people who will kind of keep tabs on this and make sure that we do what we need to do.
It's kind of a standing committee of sorts, isn't it?
Yeah. I think it should probably involve that because, as we know, staff has a lot of work to do and doesn't want to have to be the ones kind of doing all the work behind the scenes to make this happen.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that it's not an additional burden on staff and that it can be delegated appropriately.
Yeah. I think that the certification process, the initial certification should be relatively easy. We have to get 150 points and broken down in the certain areas and a lot of the things we're already doing, but as you get certified, and then, I think there's like a year period to get certified, and then there are other steps to move forward. So the initial phase may be relatively simple, but it'll be the latter stages that get harder. Anybody else? Is there any public comment on this resolution?
This is one of the areas where the city could benefit from integrating the green team and the sustainability initiative with the greenhouse gas initiative that we're about to discuss. This is kind of a natural, you know, inroad to achieving some of greenhouse gas emissions goals go kind of hand in hand in sustainability. So at the point where there becomes a green team, that team could also be involved in any greenhouse gas emissions reduction activities that the city would be undertaking. So that should be considered when formulating, you know, how the green team is organized and who gets to be on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll also, we have the funding in the budget for a sustainability coordinator, and we have a discussion next week to make sure that we, that the council agrees on the deliverables for that and the model for that so that that can go forward. I know the city manager initially wanted to put that RFP out on the street in August, but needed some better direction from us, and that's one of those additional items that this council is trying to make sure that we do before we finish our term. Any other public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item is the second reading ordinance providing for the 2011 city election. Somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move.
Second.
I heard stereo. I'll let the city clerk pick who moved that. It was either Councilmember Robinson or Councilmember Clay. He's closer, he gets it.
Sound travel is a certain speed.
Let's see. Councilmember Robinson, is that, you're late from the previous item, or is it, any want to comment on this one, or is that old?
No.
Oh. Okay. Anybody have any comments on this one? Any public comment on this resolution? Ordinance providing for the election. Seeing none, all those in favor, this is a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call? Roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Okay, we're all in favor of having an election. The next item is a consent agenda. There are four items on that. Resolutions extending the term of the Junction Task Force, appointing members to the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee, providing reappointments to the tree commission, and...
That's it?
No, that's right. Sorry, that's it. That's it. Three items.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, don't need a roll call because it's all resolutions. And I caught myself on the second reading on the previous one.
Yes, you did.
Then the last voting item on this evening's agenda is a resolution providing comments on proposed Tacoma Line and Sector Plan Design Guidelines. And let me just say that this is a, let me get to that item here in the pile. This is a, this is a complicated process, and the city has been dealing with the sector plan for about three years.
I think it started five years ago.
Five years ago. And the sector plan moved, finally moved through the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. It went to the county council where it had to get delayed for a year because they had too many of those to do at one time. So the sector plan has not been finalized at the county council. In the meantime, there were recommendations for the commercial residential zones, which got passed at the county council, but then they decided they needed to revise them, and they've come back with new ones. And then a third piece of this puzzle, because they're all independent yet they're all related, is the design guidelines. And so where we are right now is, we've been working through, trying to get to the final point on the sector plan. The CR zones are being discussed at the county council. They've been discussed at the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee over the last few weeks. They're going, they're... They're going, the full council is going to have a work session on those tomorrow in Rockville. And the design guidelines have gone through a couple of iterations. The city had a process where we had community input and we submitted, I believe, a 22-page document to Park and Planning with what we wanted in our design guidelines, which would address a lot of the things in the sector plan at Tacoma Langley. Park and Planning came back with their version of what they thought they wanted. It addressed a number of areas that ours did and they kind of provided an annotated list of all of these things and said, you know, here's where your point is covered or here's why we can't do it. And then they had a third version where they said, oh, we've taken all the words out, it's just basically pictures. And that's what you see in your, if you have the packet for this evening, that is the draft design guidelines that you have. And that is basically a much watered-down version of where we thought we were going to be and where we started with Park and Planning. So it's all been a long involved process with three things folding in on each other at the same time. For anybody who doesn't live and breathe this, it can be very difficult to understand and even for some people who live and breathe it. It changes weekly if not daily. I think the, there have been various amendments to amendments to amendments with each member of the Fed Committee coming up with their own version and submitting 158-page versions and 58-page versions and those kind of come in over the door the night before they're going to discuss them. And so it's been very difficult for staff to keep up with this. It's been very difficult for Councilmember Schultz and myself to keep up with it. And I imagine that most of our colleagues on the council and most of you in the audience are probably going, huh, I don't understand all of this. And I'll just say that we've been trying to work through all of this and we were making good progress for a long time. Lately, from our viewpoint, it's kind of ground to a halt and some of the things that are being discussed aren't what we want. Hence, these resolutions and the accompanying letters and all of the attachments and all of the addenda which are attached, and now Alana Blanchard will try and make sense of it all.
Before you begin, can I just say that I did a little research on my own? Since our meeting last week with Councilmember Elrich and put some questions and answers, which I think are appropriate, in a two-pager, which I've given to all of us on the council and I gave to you too, Alana, and I have a few other copies if anyone is interested in seeing them. I did, I asked some questions of some folks and put together these questions. I ended up, as you have intimated, Mayor Williams, kind of more confused than I started and I have both a development and a planning and a legal background and now a political background and I was still perplexed, so just leave it at that.
Turn the globe. Okay.
So briefly, what we're talking about tonight is mainly the urban design guidelines. But the two documents that, there are three documents that are related to it, but the two documents which have the potential to contain the depth of the design details that the community is interested in, the most appropriate locations would be the sector plan or the urban design guidelines. And what, as Mayor Williams stated, that everything has been progressing fairly well. The sector plan, we've been able to achieve the changes that we were looking for. However, the way that the urban design guidelines have been drafted and have been presented are not reflective of the best interests and concerns of the city of Tacoma Park. And so because of this, and I'm going to walk you through this, in terms of the documents that are attachments, because there are many documents and it can be confusing to figure out which one goes together and what is going to who.
And if I could just interrupt you for a second. And the further confusion comes from the fact that the county is getting ready to rewrite the zoning code.
Right.
And that is a multi-year process which we haven't been briefed on yet, but we will be briefed probably in January. And that has other issues that kind of fold into this, but we aren't there yet. So we're trying to not go toward that zoning rewrite, but dealing only with the sector plan, the CR zone, and the design guidelines.
Right. So there are two resolutions that are attached to this. And so the strongest resolution relates to the sector plan and that, the purpose of that resolution is to add stronger language to the sector plan that would then guide development over the next 20 years. And that has been added, or the request is made, or the recommendation is made to add that to the sector plan because those are the types of things that we feel are especially important to the community and things that we do not expect to change over 20 years. So there are things related to the compatibility, compatibility issues with the adjoining neighborhood. There are several sites or many sites in this sector plan that are adjacent especially to New Hampshire Gardens. And so those recommendations are very important in protecting the feel and neighborliness of the neighborhood and the edges which are right next to the sector plan area or right next to those rezoning areas. The other recommendations relate to quality. And then finally, there are some recommendations that relate to pedestrian orientation and pedestrian facilities, for example, streetscapes, which are not in the urban design guidelines and they're not in the zone, so we've asked for them to be more present in the sector plan. So that resolution, I believe is the first resolution in your package. Let me just make sure.
Where's the second?
It's the second. It's, that resolution is the second one in your package. So that resolution...
Recommending to the county council.
Right, and that resolution is recommending specific items. It's saying, and there is, and then Exhibit A is the exhibit that goes along with that resolution and which contains language related to those recommendations. The resolution provides for editorial changes, for clarification, to ensure that it meets the intent of the community, but it does contain specific changes to the text of the sector plan.
And if I can just add there that when we went with earlier, with an earlier document with those line-by-line changes, the chair of the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Florine, was very complimentary and appreciative of that process and said providing that type of level of detail was something that she wished all of the people addressing these types of plans would do.
They do, they appreciate knowing exactly what the community wants, so it's always good. And then the second resolution, which is the first one in the attachment, is to the planning board. The planning board is planning to look at the recommended draft urban design guidelines. That's this document and if you're looking for a copy, it can be found online on www.the newav.com or in the council agenda. There's a link to this under this agenda item. So, and we didn't print out extra copies just because it's great to see it in color, it can be confusing in black and white. Although the words will all be there. So the, this draft is being considered by the planning board on October 6th and the resolution essentially recommends that the planning board not adopt this draft and to not adopt any draft until it's clear, specific, clearer, it contains details that are clear and specific. Right now, the draft has some language that's strong, but most of the language is more along the lines of consider. And the draft has, leaves out large areas which we know are covered at site plan, but frequently a developer will come in with a plan and then everyone asks for changes related to pedestrian safety or related to screening or buffering. And those are simple things that if they were clearly spelled out, could easily be followed. They're not really the level of detail you want in a master plan for 20 years, but they are something that you would want in an urban design document to help developers so they're not constantly coming back with changes and they're able to understand upfront what is going to be asked of them during the site plan review process. So, and then the attachment for this is a staff analysis and comments. And we did not recommend specific language because we don't feel that, well, we didn't recommend specific language, but we did let them know what our concerns were with the existing language and then reiterated the language that the community feels strongly about and then which, what parts of that language are covered in other places and what parts should really be covered here. So those two documents are the ones that you're voting on. Those two resolutions with the attachments. One provides specific language to the planning, to the county council and the other provides comments and analysis to the planning board. And then the other attachments are for information purposes.
And what I'd like to do is, we're going to vote on both of these, but, and they kind of cross over enough that we're taking them together, but when we actually get to voting on them, we're going to take them up separately. So there's going, I think it's going to be helpful to make general comments and make sure that we're understanding exactly where these are going and then we'll kind of go from there to, okay, let's address this one and first the county council one and then the one to the planning board. And let me just, I think it would be helpful to point out that in my cover letter that's going to go with these, I just want to quote a little bit of the language that I hope will make it clear why we're doing this. In the, for the county council resolution, the letter to Council President Irvin says, "The city of Tacoma Park is extremely concerned that we cannot find the details we need to guide new development in our community. They're not in the commercial residential zones, they're not in the Tacoma Langley Crossword Sector Plan, nor are they in the urban design guidelines. We endorse the sector plan with the belief that these details would materialize. They have not. The design guidelines recommended by planning department staff are nonexistent, barely going further than the recommendations included in the sector plan. The zoning code only provides parking standards. How apt for a community that values sustainability and is actively working to increase the use of bikes and public transportation." And then at the end saying, you keep saying with the urban design guidelines that you would, that we have, we've been told we can't get the details there. And so for this reason, we're turning to you and to the county council to address our concerns and support the incorporation of additional design recommendations in the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan. And then on the, got to get through the packet here to find, oh, here it is. The letter to the planning board about the design guidelines, addressing concerns by saying, "Rather than engaging in a meaningful dialogue with the city and community residents, planning staff issued successive drafts, each of which has been less responsive to the communities and the city's needs and shared vision." And it's clear in seeing the iterations of the design guidelines that this was all becoming much less specific and we were ending up with a pretty picture book of places other than here, which would just lead developers to, if these got adopted, think that that's what we want here when in fact it's not what we want. So we need to press for these details somewhere. And if they're not going to be in the design guidelines, they're going to have to be in the sector plan. So that's why we're addressing all this. And maybe I'll look first to Councilmember Schultz for any comments he'd like to make. He's been in the trenches as much or more than I have on this.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Mayor Williams said earlier that it has been very hard to keep up with all the changes, the rapid changes and the devolution of this whole process. But the fact is that we have kept up. And I want to compliment Alana Blanchard for her work. Listening to the arguments, the Fed Committee for what, four, four and a half hours last week, became convinced that the person in the room that understood the, what was going on probably better than anybody else was our community development planner, Alana Blanchard. And she has been, spent, I don't know how many hours over these years, working on it. So thank you, Alana, I appreciate the work that you're doing. The two letters that have been drafted and are awaiting approval of this resolution are very explicit as to our displeasure as a city. And I think they are set the exactly right tone because I frankly have been just disgusted. I am really angry about this. Really disgusted by the way the, 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 the planning staff and the, and the, and the county's planning director have handled this. And there are some people in the county planning staff who have been doing, I think, their very, very best to try to respond to, to the city of Tacoma Park. I'm not going to name names, but they've constantly had their, the rug pulled out from underneath them. After the guidelines that were adopted by the residents through a series of, I don't know, six or seven meetings that were, that the city helped lead us through last spring and they were sent to the, to the county planning board and we were told they were too vague. We were then assured that, don't worry, they may not show up in the urban design guidelines, but they certainly will show up either in the sector plan or be covered in the CR zoning. And that, of course, has turned out not to be the, not to be the case. The situation now is that, the state of affairs is that these so-called urban design guidelines, which as Mayor Williams characterizes, basically a picture book of pretty places around the United States that have really nothing to do with Tacoma Park, although there's a few pictures of downtown Silver Spring and stuff like that to have a little smell of familiarity to it, is basically a patronizing document. It treats us, I feel, as though we're not able to decide what we think is a reasonable set of guidelines and that therefore the planners, and mind you, I went to planning school and got my master's degree in it, and I'm not the only one on the city council that's got that kind of background. So we understand when stuff is nonsense and when stuff is real. What we have right now is something that more or less tells the community, well, we appreciate your efforts, but you fell short, so therefore in effect, we need to, because we're professional planners or whatever they imagine, we're going to look out for your best interests since you can't really do that. I suppose what we're thought of is Tacoma Park or Ward 6 is a third world country or a third world ward or something, I'm not sure what. But the community has in fact done, and I say that as, not just in Ward 6, but the city, has done a very conscientious job in all of these areas with regard to responding and giving intelligent direction on the sector plan and the CR zoning and on the urban design guidelines. And it isn't to say that everything we ask for is going to be adopted, we understand that. You know, but a few, not so long ago, I was reassuring residents and my constituents that we were this close to getting this whole thing completed. We thought it was going to be in July and then, you know, realized a little more work needed to be done so it would be done after the August recess here and in the county. Well, now, and here we are, going backwards. I guess I can go on, but I better not because I've made my point, I guess. And I do think that we need to try to stop the city council, the county council from pursuing this line of reasoning. You know, from where I come from... You know, from where I come from, you know, the, the county ought, should be, and I think many other people up there are grateful for the guidance that we have given to them. I, I have discerned that, you know, a number of the people who sit on the county council, and this isn't really a criticism because they don't represent us, really have almost no knowledge whatsoever of the Tacoma Langley area. And I wouldn't be surprised if some of them were to say to us, well, I've never really been there. And that's fine. And so that's why a governing body like that needs to rely so heavily on the intelligent input of, of the residents, which we have given them. And somehow or another, not, and despite the best efforts of some of our members on the council, Mr. Elrich and Mr. Leventhal, we, we are, we are in this pickle right now. And so I thank the staff and I thank the, the mayor and all those who put together these, these, these resolutions and this, the, these letters which are ready to go out tonight for their, for their good work on this.
And just before I go to my other colleagues, I just also wanted to say that the, the C R zone process that the council has been going through, both we and the town of Kensington have had problems with where this is going. And we've been joined by a town of Kensington council member, Lydia Sullivan, tonight. Thanks for being here. And we're, we're going to be, they're, they and we are going to be in Rockville tomorrow trying to work with the county council to make sure that we get the kind of results that we need. And I think they've been hoping that the city of Tacoma Park and the town of Kensington would come in with a united front. And I think we're a lot closer to that than we have been. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. First, I want to thank our planner, Alana Blanchard, for all the work that she has done on this. And it's been, you know, it's been a lot of hours and there have been a lot of community folks that have been involved. It's, it's disappointing to, to spend lots and lots of your professional staff time and lots and lots of your community members' volunteer time. They spend their time becoming experts on the issue and advocating on the issue. And it's come to this where we felt like things were moving forward in this really positive way and now we're about to pass these two resolutions that say, you know, essentially this is not, this is not acceptable. I think it's a really important thing to do. And I won't go over the pieces that Councilmember Schultz went over, but I would say that this is really important to us because land use patterns and land use design really affects what your community feels like. There's a big difference in the community feel that you get when you drive along New Hampshire Avenue versus when you drive along Carroll Avenue in the downtown area of the community. And this is really, you know, what this conversation is about is how we find the appropriate kinds of designs that we're looking for in the different places of our community. It is, it's, it's very important. My partner and I were driving down Willow Street today and she said, "This is my favorite street in the city." And I said, "Why?" And she says, "I don't know, I just, I love the feel of it." And, you know, it's, it's the big trees and the big strip between the sidewalk and the, and the, and the curb, it's the small scale of the street and those kinds of things. And I think, here's, here's something to think about to see how important it is to get it right. When I was in planning school, maybe a little, a little later than Councilmember Schultz was in planning school, one of the things that we, that we talked about was the longevity of the, the land use patterns that are developed. And when I came here, was at a forum with Mark Elrich one time, and the county itself said that the average residential land use pattern lasts for 172 years. On the other end of that is big box retail, which they said lasts about 15 years before it gets shifted and changes. But, but when you, when you put things into the, into your land use pattern, it really defines what your community is like and your opportunity to change that, once that's laid down, doesn't come around frequently. And that's why, that's, this is so important and why I, I support the, putting the brakes on this. And the, I'll put, again, say that I have not been really supportive of having our own zoning department over the years, but this is one in a number of activities that also makes me want to talk about the, that as a, as an issue. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, I'm approaching it kind of as a, and I, and I was surprised, honestly, I was surprised that, that it came around this direction. To me, it seemed quick because, because like you Fred, it seemed like the summer you were, I was, I felt like you and Bruce were going along and Alana, you were, things were going along. I knew that, that there were concerns, I have general concerns, which I've kind of clarified. And I think that my general concerns, concerns are more about larger processes. I continued to hear about master plan, sector plan, regional plan, site plan, zoning text amendments, design guidelines, where they all fit, the fact that there's one commercial residential zone and then that's going to be split. And so I'm, I'm, I have great concerns that the county-wide process will, will have trouble in any event in respecting what we want at our local level. So I'm with you, Colleen, I'm more along the lines, as you know, of, of doing things in a smaller scale. I hope these questions are, are of some interest or, or help in that, in those broader issues as well as, as some of the specifics. And, and that's really all I have to say.
Councilmember Seans.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alana, for all the time and effort you did on this. It hasn't been your easiest project. I just wanted to understand kind of what involvement our business people in the crossroads area have had with, with you.
Sure. Each version of the design guidelines that the, that was developed over the spring with the community was sent out to the business community and, and to the property developers. And several folks participated, I wouldn't say that there were as many business or property owners that participated as residents did. I think most of the property owners have seen the planning board and, planning staff at the county level and the council as a more direct route. Obviously, some folks have come here and, and become engaged through the sector plan approval process. We did receive one email today and I believe it was handed out to everyone.
Yes.
And that is the representative from the B F Saul property and they are a big believer in more flexibility and less constraints in terms of redevelopment. So they would not support this resolution.
Okay, I've heard from other business people in that area too and with the same bottom line, which they support the resolution.
Bottom line, so B F Saul, if they do not support the resolution.
No, no, our resolution or our, our letter against the resolution.
Okay.
It's confusing to me.
They support the letters or they don't support?
They do support the letters.
And that's different from B F Saul.
B F Saul does not support the resolution.
Does not support the letter.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
The, the property owner that owns Expo E Mart that was formerly Safeway, they, and they're considering redeveloping when the purple line comes. So they would, they would like less urban design guidance. And they would, they would like essentially they're, it to be more, they're in favor of more flexibility and less specific recommendations.
And if I can just provide what I think is a, I'll provide my understanding of why we're going the direction we are. It's the sense that developers want guidance at the beginning to know what it is the community wants so that they don't go through and spending money and their time developing a project and taking it to the planning department and saying, "Okay, we've looked at all of the information that you've provided. We think we understand what you want, here's what we want, here's the project." And then to be told, "Well, no, I know you saw those pretty pictures in the design guidelines, but that was just a guidance, that's not what you, that's not what we want. We don't like what you've done, start over." Nobody wants to hear that. So the more specificity you can say, "We want this, we like, we like this, this and this in our community, we don't want it to look like these certain things in our community," makes their job much easier going in and they're much less likely to have to repeat any time and money that they've already put in. So that's, that's why specificity is better, that's what we're pushing for.
And, and to be clear, the other business owners that I've talked with, support this council's planned action tonight.
That's great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah.
I just want to affirm what you've just said, Mayor Williams, is that residents and developers in general, and I can tell you that the residents darn well need to have some assurance, which these urban design, this urban design guideline draft that we prepared was going to give them, that the, the boundary areas were not going to be ruinous to property values and to the, the aesthetic feel of, of, of our neighborhood along the edges of this sector plan. And if you actually look through, read the, the guidelines that we have prepared, and I'm not going to do, even cite any of them in this, for the sake of time, but what you'll find is that most of them are really obvious. They're rather benign kind of things. And they are guidelines, it's not law, it doesn't say that you have to absolutely do this, like a certain, where we say, you know, retail users should be close to the sidewalk. Obviously, if a developer, developer comes forward five years or 10 years from now and says to the community, "This design that we've come up with will meet all the criteria, but however, here's some ideas that we think would help." And the community can then react to them and sort of say, "Hey, great, we think your idea is really clever and is going to be better than what we could have anticipated." That's what the guidelines are for. They sort of set a bottom threshold and tell a developer what is the basics of what it is the community expects. And then if you can do that, you're, you're much less likely to run into a lot of sand being raised and delays and arguments being raised from, from the resident. Any developer who says that that's not important to them is an idiot or that, or they've just never done development before in a public way. And so that's what the, the urban design guidelines basically do, is that they cannot guarantee anything to residents, they cannot guarantee anything to developers, but they do give a lot of reassurance to both, which will really facilitate the development of our neighborhood up there at the crossroads. And Lord knows, we need to do everything we can to facilitate it, to make it easier for developers to look at that area and sort of say, "Yeah, I can, I can do this and I can do, I'll make, make some money on this and it's going to work." The, the degree to which it's vague and wishy-washy is, is the degree to which developers are going to sort of step, step back and sort of say, "Well, could develop here, but on the other hand, I could go to Silver Spring or Route One in Hivesville and build the same, try to do the same thing and I won't have to put up with all this stuff that I don't really understand." We can't afford to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments up here? Why don't we, Councilmember Schultz, if you want to move the resolution, making the recommendations to the county council, we'll do that one first?
I so move.
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Clay. I'd like to take public comment on that resolution and we'll vote on that one and then we'll go back to the one to the, to park and planning, just so we can, since we got two resolutions, we'll address them separately.
Hi, I'm Chris Ruland, I'm an attorney with Lord Shirley Brewer. I didn't prepare my comments to be addressed to separate resolutions, so there may be some overlap here.
Sure.
But I think now's the appropriate time. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bob Harris, who is also with Lord Shirley, who represents various owners of commercial properties in Tacoma Langley Sector Point area, including Hampshire Langley Shopping Center, Tacoma Langley Crossroads Shopping Center, Tacoma Langley Crossroads C D A. In addition, I believe you've already have the, the written testimony, or an email from B F Saul, Bob Wolf, I believe, probably sent that. He also endorses our comments tonight. As you are aware, the owners of these commercial properties in Sector Plan area have been actively involved in the city's continuing review of the sector plan and fully support the purple line and associated future redevelopment opportunities. However, these owners do not support including specific urban design guidelines in the sector plan. As such, sector plan provisions could interfere with the ability to make reasonable interim changes on these commercial properties prior to redevelopment. Nor do these owners support urban design guidelines which are elevated to the status of requirements. Specifically, we note the following concerns. First, design guidelines are not typically contained in sector plans because such guidelines are too specific and do not allow appropriate flexibility and creativity in responding to site-specific constraints. Maximizing flexibility in response to market demand is crucial to the sector plan area where commercial properties are already struggling from average vacancies, below-average rents and adverse tenant economics. Second, implementing design guidelines through a sector plan document creates hardships for anyone who wants to vary the standards for a particular project, primarily because the sector plan would need to be formally amended to provide deviations on any given site. We estimate that an additional two years would be added to the development process to obtain approval for any necessary sector plan amendment, assuming that resources are even available at the county to undertake such an endeavor. Third, sector plans by definition are intended to provide long-term guidance and are not to be frequently amended. The Tacoma Langley Sector Plan itself is intended to provide relevant guidance for 20 years or more. For this reason, sector plans seek to avoid having overly specific recommendations that may become irrelevant over time. In contrast, design guidelines deal with subjective concerns over which consensus may fluctuate. Such design controls are better implemented through a separate document that provides latitude for interpretation and can be more readily amended so as to adapt over time to changes in community preferences. In closing, we would note that wholesale redevelopment of commercial properties in Sector Point area will not be feasible until after the purple line is constructed and economic conditions improve to create sufficient demand. Therefore, it is imperative that the sector plan be flexible enough to accommodate interim uses until such redevelopment occurs. Including overly specific urban design guidelines in the sector plan does not promote flexibility. Rather doing so would provide a disincentive for new interim uses in the area where attracting redevelopment is already difficult and would indicate that reasonable uses do not, that do not conform with such guidelines, it will not be readily achievable. We strongly encourage you to adopt the urban design guidelines as proposed, as a separate document, and do not require them to be incorporated within the sector plan. Thank you.
And let me just briefly say that that's where we thought we were going originally. And because Park and Planning said basically that the, the design guidelines are going to be, in our estimation, useless, we said, "Well, you got to put them somewhere." So if you're not going to have them separate and be guidelines, then they're going to have to go somewhere. It's not going to be the C R zone, it's going to have to be the sector plan. I wish they were, I wish the design guidelines were guidelines and had some specificity and then we would agree with you.
Oh, I just would agree. That's exactly correct. It was the planning department's idea, not us. And we, we had what we wanted a few months ago, which was completely compatible with what B F Saul and, and Bob Harris, who was Bob Wolf and Bob Harris, wanted. But unfortunately, we're no longer in that realm.
I just wanted, I wasn't prepared to make two, comments on two separate resolutions either, but I wanted to actually comment in response to the testimony that we just heard and explain that we've heard from the planning, I'm sorry, I'm Barry Howard from 7607 Wildwood Drive and Ward Six, for the record. So my, my comments is that the urban design guidelines actually used to be included within master plans according to Planning Department Director Roland Stanley. And the whole reason to pull them out was to allow for a more flexible document. So the flexibility issues that some of the developers are concerned about have already been addressed within the design guidelines. However, to quote Mark Elrich from Fed Committee meeting, the- However, to quote Mark Elrich from Fed Committee meeting, the, the flip side of flexibility is uncertainty. So there is a sweet spot between flexibility and certainty, and I think that's what the city council is addressing here tonight. So I fully support this resolution because I think that there does need to be some specificity put back into this documentation so that it does, it meets the objectives that you've laid out here tonight to provide some certainty, not only for the residents that live in the area like myself, but also for the commercial developers. Because one size does not fit all within Montgomery County, especially within the city of Tacoma Park. We may be a niche market, but I think that we are asking for quality development here. We have a certain character to our neighborhoods and to our citywide development initiatives that are going on now. And I think that, that we deserve the right to, to put forward what we would like to see and work with the developers. And I think that there is an opportunity for developers that will enjoy that moment and will appreciate that certainty, that the citizens have stepped forward, the city have stepped forward and said, this is what we would like. And they say, what a win-win for us. They've already told us what they would like to see. We're happy to do that. And, and then we're going to have a successful project and it'll sail right through all of the various hoops that we have to get through to get to the point where we're cutting the ribbon. So, so once again, in closing, I support your resolution tonight. I think it does allow for flexibility. It's part of the design of pulling out those design guidelines out of a master plan, having it a separate document that can be amended and changed over time rather than the 20 to 30 year cycle that a master plan is supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have a comment on the resolution, but I do have a suggestion. Several council members mentioned that due to the ongoing situation, it might be a good time to discuss the city actually having a planning and zoning department. I would like to suggest that at some point in the near future that that actually be put on the council agenda as an item for discussion and solicitation of public comments as to exactly what it would take for the city of Tacoma Park to establish its own planning and zoning authority so that people will know what the implications are of, of that kind of decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
Hello, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Lydia Sullivan. I'm a town council member in Kensington. I'm speaking on my own behalf because we have not formally made decisions on some of these issues, but the town of Kensington also spent many months working on very detailed design guidelines, which were largely disregarded in the document that came out of Park and Planning. This is it. I haven't actually seen your design guidelines, but ours are very pretty. They have lots of pictures. Very little in the, there we go. Yes. Very little in the way of specificity, lots of pictures of one and two-story buildings, which we will never get. And we do have some of the same concerns in the town, both among residents and council members. Specifically, I testified over many months before the planning board when they had all their, I think they had eight work sessions on the CR Zones. And I always brought up, you know, where are the protections for neighborhoods? And we were told over and over again, that's a master plan issue, that's a design guideline issue. Basically, your prayers will be answered in the design guidelines. So we were very surprised when we got, you know, very non-specific design guidelines that were not, not filled with detail. And I also wanted to mention a few things about design guidelines that you may have covered this before. I just came from a council meeting, so I apologize if I missed the first part of this. But design guidelines are only before the planning board, unlike Sector Plans and CR Zones. So they're, they're guidelines, they're not standards. They can be changed at any time by the planning board, which is both a strength and a weakness. And the biggest thing of all is they're not legally enforceable. And to give them more strength, and this is my personal opinion, I would like to see all of the design guidelines and, because we have similar problems in Wheaton, Tacoma and Kensington, I'd like to see all of the design guidelines put into the Sector Plans where they have a bit more strength. And another thing about design guidelines, we have many small properties in Kensington adjacent to neighborhoods. The CR Zones are designed for infill development. Infill, we don't have this in Kensington. We just have somebody raising a hand. Many of the properties will not go to site plan because they don't meet the site plan thresholds, which there are four different characteristics they have to meet. But basically, 10,000 square feet and under will not go to site plan. If you have no site plan, you have no design guidelines. They don't have to comply. That's a big issue in my community.
Just ignore that, Lydia.
Okay, is that all right? Another thing that I'd like to say is just with regard to flexibility, I think everyone, I really think we all want the same thing. We want, sure, we want flexibility, but we want to also have certainty. You know, no one wants to make development, the development process so long and arduous that no one will go through it. But I think we all want a, we want placemaking. We want to build a community that's beautiful, useful and successful for everyone. And I really look forward to working with Tacoma Park. I personally support both of these resolutions. Again, that's not, I'm not taking a position as a council member, but as myself. And, you know, another, can I mention one other thing from the CR hearings? I've attended CR hearings, all of the hearings and work sessions except for one since January. At first, it was just me and one other Kensington person and then other people joined in. Some of my concerns about the design guidelines regard, or with regard to applicability, that some of the language that's being considered tomorrow before the council work session with CR Zones is the applicability, the CR Zones can only be applied through a master plan. And that, that's, that's relating to the design guidelines also. And we want to make sure that those are also applied through the Sector Plan. The zoning rewrite is another concern because they could, they could do one district map amendment and rezone the whole county at once. And if we don't have, if these areas don't have the protection of a master plan with design guidelines in them, then that's problematic for commercial areas around the county. And there's language that has changed myriad times over design guidelines and whether they're conforming, substantially consistent, consistent, and now they've changed it to must address any design guidelines. So you may have already discussed this, so I apologize if you have.
That's in our resolution.
Oh, it is, okay. And so of course, that's a watered-down situation there. So I thank you so much and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lydia, I have a question that, while you're here, because you clearly know a lot. And it has to do with the site plan review. I, I built a small building and I went through site plan review and I was required to because I was in a certain, what's called an enterprise zone. So I remember site plan review, the good and the bad and the ugly of it. We've had a significant comment from the, the large shopping center folks, the very large businesses, saying in essence that they don't support the resolutions that we have on the table. But the site plan review threshold that you mentioned a couple of minutes ago would have to do, I think, with the smaller developers.
Yes.
And, and I think you mentioned that it was up to 10,000 square foot, that up, that there's, could you, actually, let me just say, can you say a little bit more about that, that low threshold?
There are four criteria. Let's see if I can remember them all. It's 10,000, if it meets these, then it has to go to site plan. 10,000 square feet is limited use, has 10 or more units, or is above 40 feet.
Forty feet.
Also, if, and this is in the use table, it's separate, but if there, if it will have a drive-through. And those who have the, those are, and if you think about, I mean, a CVS, a freestanding CVS or, like there's a Walgreens in Rehoboth, that's about 10,000 square feet. So that's about the size of 10,000 square foot building and it could go next to someone's house even if the zoning uses permitted.
So no site plan means it has to adhere to the zoning requirements or other things that are written down, but there's no kind of negotiation beyond that? Is that right?
They go to the Department of Permitting Services and get a permit and build.
Okay.
I want to go back to the part where she said, well, she arrived at 9:22 and she's already been to her council meeting and it's done and she's driven from council.
That was an unusually short council meeting. And we're just a town of 1,900 people, so. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Lorraine Puresal, Sony 708 Tacoma Avenue. And I agree with your resolutions and I thank you for it. I think you really should please put the skids on this pot, this whole thing and slow it down. I think you should actually be pretty mad about what's going on here because there, really what it is, is a concerted effort to harm our master plans and weaken them and build up the county and increase the density to amazing levels. And this is very scary. It's all connected, the CR Zones, the urban design guidelines, the, the master plans. Absolutely, these guidelines, what we're calling these guidelines should have specificity to protect your community and they should be in the sector or master plans. This may come as a shock to you, but there are developers out there who really don't care what the community wants. And you must care what the community wants. And this is, this is a very, very scary development. This is all, all intertwined. The CR end zone will allow extremely tall buildings right next to residential homes. And you need to worry about this. You need to look at it in its totality, not by itself. These urban design guidelines are horrible that they have come up with and the situation is terrible, yes, and the language being so vague. However, the worst part of this whole thing is that it's stripped out of the master plans and the master plans are losing their, their importance. And those are the tools that we have as a community to fight back because master plans have standing. Why do you think they're doing this? They are weakening our process. They are weakening our voices. This is really, really very important. And, and in fact, they are now working on a residential zoning rewrite. God only knows what's going to come of that. You need to be angry. You need to be watchful and you need to say no to the county. And honestly, you need to educate yourselves on this because there is nothing that influences the quality of our lives than zoning. Nothing affects it more than that. This is all a concerted effort to change that for the worse. Thanks.
And let me just point out that the two letters that are accompanying these resolutions as part of this packet, I would characterize as the mayor does angry.
Yes.
The mayor doesn't often do angry, but. Anybody else? Anything that you need to add on these lines? Okay. We have the resolution going to the county council before us. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll now vote on the resolution that is going to the planning board.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any further council comments on this one? Any further public comments on this one? I know a lot of you addressed both of them together. I just wanted to make sure that we cover them separately since they're separate resolutions.
I'm still Barry Howard. These is my, this is my prepared comments. So I wanted to thank the city council for rejecting the Montgomery County Planning Department's urban design guidelines, given how watered-down the document has become since the city's draft was transmitted to planning last spring. I wanted to thank the city council for demanding guidance be reinserted into the guidelines in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan so commercial developers and residents alike have a greater sense of certainty about development projects in the future. I want to thank the city council for putting the public back into public service and recognizing that the city's draft was a better reflection of the community's interests and values and adhered to a transparent public process. And finally, I wanted to thank the city council for taking the lead and leadership as these resolutions are a bellwether for civic associations and municipal governments all over Montgomery County who have been struggling to assert that the host of economic development initiatives facing our communities does not support the residents' interests and values. These resolutions reaffirm our reputation as a progressive activist community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. And we will now take a short break and come back for our two work session discussions. State Highway Administration regarding Route 410 in Tacoma Park. And I believe the deputy city manager's gonna?
I'll sit with you on this.
Okay.
We have three of the four people that participated here, so a number of us will jump in. The last time we discussed the status of Maryland 410, Philadelphia, Bit of Carroll, Ethan Allen and East West Highway through Tacoma Park was at the June 6 city council meeting. And at that meeting, a direction was given to city staff and the city attorney for, for to take into a negotiation session with representatives of the Maryland State Highway Administration. And those six items in direction were that controls are in place so that Maryland 410 may not be expanded in Tacoma Park by adding vehicle lanes to the roadway, that SHA would be responsible for daily and long-term maintenance of the road, including snow plowing, pothole and other road repair, resurfacing and drainage, that the location and design of pedestrian facilities, including crosswalks across the roadway, be determined by the city of Tacoma Park within the bounds of state law, that permits for activities in the right-of-way, including in the roadbed, be issued by the city of Tacoma Park, that specifications for signage are adopted, that allow for smaller sign size and smaller font size, more appropriate for the narrow right-of-way and slower speeds, that the city and SHA work together on signal timing issues and any proposed changes to pavement markings. It took a little bit of time. You may recall during this period, during the summer, Administrator Neil Peterson retired and so there's some change over at State Highway and it's still in an interim status there. But we were able to schedule a meeting for August 30th. And we did have a negotiation session with city manager Bart Matthews, myself, Daryl Braithwaite, Sue Sober and from State Highway, Kate Mazzara was the lead for State Highway. She's been our contact person. Ryan Young, who's the District Three engineer, and their attorney, Jamie Seward. It was an interesting meeting. I think it only lasted two hours, but it felt longer. It was a quite intensive meeting. One of the things I think was good was that we identified many common concerns that we both have in terms of managing the roadway, wanting to know who's responsible, recognizing that we have similar issues with utilities and a variety of things. And that was, that was useful. We identified a lot of common issues and, and a lot of common ways to address the smaller issues, still important, but the smaller issues. When we really discussed the status of kind of who should own the road, how should that function, it was a livelier discussion. I'd like to say that our city attorney did a remarkable job of keeping, kind of bringing the discussion to a, a civil level and, and making real progress. And it took us a little bit to, to come up with an answer, but I think the proposal that we left with to bring back to you and to the higher-ups at State Highway was that we left with to bring back to you and to the higher-ups at State Highway was pretty close to the direction that was given to us by council, and, and I think we all felt on both sides that we made real progress at the negotiating session. The proposals that we're bringing back to you to discuss, the primary one is that the city of Tacoma Park would grant a perpetual easement to State Highway, not a prescriptive easement, a perpetual easement to State Highway for the portions of the right-of-way it owns for maintenance purposes of Maryland 410. Any underlying claims of ownership or easement by the city of Tacoma Park would not be affected, we'd maintain those, and an MOU would be negotiated, specific detailing the specifics of State Highway's responsibility with respect to maintenance and for the city's joint authority on a variety of operational requirements. And the, a lot of the specificity has not been laid out. We had a lot of discussion about it at the meeting, but I think that, as you'll see, we wanted to make sure that this was an appropriate way to go forward before we spent all the hours on, on what those kind of, the details of the MOU would entail. Another aspect of the proposal is that State Highway would convey Flower Avenue to the city, which it had already agreed to, but this would identify it as one of the MOUs that accompanies this or one of the agreements, and that State Highway would provide the city the $696,000 for Flower Avenue. An MOU would be developed with respect to utility permits that would establish the city's level of participation in the utility permitting process. The discussion that we had at the table would, that the city would be one of the parties that would have to sign off on a permit before it were approved to a utility, and in those kind of situations, each of the signatories has their criteria and standards that have to be met for that entity to sign off on it. Another part of the proposal is that the city would convey the 7,800 block of Carroll Avenue to State Highway. You'll remind, you'll remember that this was one block that State Highway said that we owned, and everybody thought it made sense to go ahead and, and transfer that ownership to State Highway when we've discussed this in the past. Item E is if flexibility exists, State Highway will consider the city's preferences as to sign and font sizes for signs in the state route right-of-way. I'll address that in a moment. And F is that State Highway will involve the city in a determination of appropriate signal timing. Overall, we believe that these proposals meet the direction of the council as best as can be met. Obviously, there's lots of details that would work out many of the concerns that would need to continue to be negotiated. But there were several items that I think are big, the biggest issue perhaps on the table, is that State Highway will not agree to never widen Maryland 410. The State Highway attorney stated this as a right of state government, that they will not concede, and they would not set a precedent, and it's not something that they would do. When we had the discussion, I think everyone at the table also recognized that it's highly unlikely that widening of State Highway to more than two lanes of 410 in Tacoma Park would happen. There's, has been discussed before in this body, there's a multi-tiered public approval process, us and the county and the state, that would need to go through for any kind of change. It's a lengthy process. At each stage, they'd have to say why the, what would, what's the compelling reason to go against federal historic preservation protections, park protections, and the provisions of the county's Tacoma Park Master Plan. And remember, even though we call it the Tacoma Park Master Plan and we did most of the work on it, it is the county document for this area, and the county council would have to be convinced that it needed to be changed. In addition, of course, there's the cost of paying property owners for the land that would have to be taken, and I think everybody expected political and legal battles along the way. One of the things that we want to mention here is that with the use of a perpetual easement, the city wouldn't lose any standing that we had had before in terms of our role in, in that process. On the second item, State Highway won't, says that they would be flexible, as flexible as is permitted. One of the things that we kind of learned at this meeting, which was a little bit of news to me, in reading the Federal Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, there's a decent amount of flexibility as to sign size and font size, pilot projects, some of those kinds of things. However, Maryland adopts them for Maryland use, but doesn't allow, but does not adopt the portion that has the flexibility. So they, they adopt the base regulations, but they don't also endorse and, and include the flexibility provisions of the national standards.
And that was by design, they did that?
You know, I-
Or they just goofed?
That's, I think that's just what they're comfortable with. Now, I think that, as we've discussed before in legislative matters, that this might be something that we could address directly through state legislation, and that's more appropriate than trying to address it, I think, road by road. So that's for your information. It was interesting to learn the distinction between the Maryland standards and the federal standards. There were quite a lot of discussion about pedestrian concerns, crosswalks and that kind of thing, but we did not, in the end, come up with a resolution on that. It's kind of the, some of the detail that would be worked out in the MOU and how we, the two parties would work together. We are bringing this to you this evening to see if, what your thoughts are about this and if we should move forward to scheduling a, a resolution for you to consider on October 10th that would allow us to go forward and finalize the, kind of the documents that go forward for this. Given the sensitivity of the topic, it made sense to know what you thought, especially about the concept of the perpetual easement, and Sue Sober can address the issue, the legal issues between the perpetual easement and the previous proposal to have the prescriptive easement, if you wish.
And I just want to start with one procedural question.
Uh huh.
It looks like there would be potentially multiple MOUs.
Correct.
And the process would be that in order to adopt those MOUs, they would have to come back to the council?
Well, it depends on how the resolution is written, I think, and what authority you might give either you or the city manager to sign off on those if they meet the criteria that, that you would have stated in advance. One of the things that we did talk about and have continued to talk about in our back-and-forth with the attorney for State Highway is that this really does function as a package. So, you know, they hook together for a variety of purposes, and so it is a, it is a series of, of MOUs and legal, other legal documents.
And, and from SHA's point of view, they have some time sensitivities that they're hoping to address?
They would like to be able to, if this is going to move forward, they would hope that a decision would be made by November because then it helps them advertise to do the paving of the sections that we didn't pave already of 410 and Tacoma Park. And they have an interest in, in, you know, meeting the schedule to be able to go out in the spring for construction.
Okay. Councilmember Clark?
Well, first, I want to thank you, both of you, and all the people in the city who have worked on this. It is clear that it has come a long ways from where we started, and I very much appreciate that. Before I forget, I do want to say that I have noted that the paving job on 410 between Colesville Road, I'm so bad with this, Colesville Road and, or like Beach Drive is where they read it, all of that, very smooth when you drive along it, and, and the paving that's on the section of 410 between the junction and Elm Avenue, when you drive, it's not, it's like I hear, like I hear my car in it. When they originally talking about this, they were talking about essentially repaving everything from one end to the other. I don't know if there's any way to sort of clean up the paving job that's there, but it's something to think about. So at the top of the list, perpetual easement, much better than a prescriptive easement. But I think that we should have, like, so you've got here the perpetual easement will also be conditioned on various agreements concerning joint control and regulation.
Right.
So if they don't meet the standards, we need to be able to kick out of the easement, I think.
If I could just speak to that, it's, it's two, two sides. One is, we're not going to sign away any easement until we have all the MOUs agreed to.
Okay.
And the concept of the MOUs, whether it's one large MOU or several small ones, I think that might be a negotiable item, is that we would deal with each of these issues that Deputy City Manager just spoke to, you know, carefully, one at a time. The overall concept, which I, I really think we need the council's reaction to, is that it's, it's, it's kind of a joint authority concept, that it's not just them who controls 410, it's not just us, there's got to be some kind of joint management of the roadway, and the MOUs will spell out how we do that.
Like a joint powers agreement? Sorry, I couldn't resist. Okay. Okay, but we sat from, what, 1994 until this year without them repaving? So I mean, if, in spite of the MOUs, they fail to uphold their side of the bargain, do we have, do we have a way to sort of kick out of the agreement? We don't want to be in the spot where they're telling us that we don't have a right to repave the road and, and, you know, people are spending a lot of money, say, you know, I spent like $3,000 on my car this year related to things on poor condition of roadway, and I'm about to replace the whole back end entirely related to poor roadway, and I'm sure that there are other people who live in the city of Tacoma Park who would like to stop spending money fixing their cars. And we don't want to get in one of those situations again where it's 15 years since they've done anything, the total road deterioration, and we're stuck at a standstill because they're saying they have a, a perpetual easement and we can't touch the road, which is what they've done to us when we've said we want to paint crosswalks between, I mean, it, it sounds ridiculous, but we've lived it, so.
So when I said there's two sides to this, I meant the following, both going into it and getting out of it.
Okay. Great. So the, here's my concern about the utility permits. So we, if we, so we do a joint permit, and I think we said before that, okay, so we could do individual permits, so we could do a joint permit. Here's the concern if we have a joint permit. We have a joint permit and the city didn't sign off on it, but the state grants them the permit anyway without the city's signature. Does the person working in the roadway hold a valid permit to work on the roadway in spite of the fact that we didn't, we're not a signatory to it? Like, where's the responsibility for that and what can we do about it?
Under the discussion that we had at the table, it would not be a valid permit unless it had all the signatories on it, and we would be one. So it would not be a valid permit.
So then if they, they issued them the permit anyway and it wasn't a valid-
Then it would not be a valid permit, too.
Okay. So I understand the sign thing and that we should go through that with the state legislature, and that totally makes sense to me. So SHA will involve the city in determination of the appropriate signal timing. This doesn't fill my heart with confidence.
I mean, I think the signal timing is a tough one.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things, and I appreciated the, the comments that were made during the council comments about some suggestions about that. The, you know, the basic fact is that the signals are old and the infrastructure is old, and at some point, that needs to be replaced so that it can be part of the county system and, and then it functions in a different way. We did not go through the details about, you know, how, the idea of coming back in 48 hours or something like that to, to check and see if it's working, I think that's something to, to further explore in the details.
Well, you know, a great time to replace the old outdated lights would be when they're repaving the road.
Yeah. The, the amount of money, frankly, I mean, it really is quite stunning how expensive it is to do the upgrade. I was shocked in learning that about how much was spent on upgrading the information, the infrastructure on, on New Hampshire Avenue, and it's still not even turned on yet, but just building the stuff underground so that when it gets to that point, it can be flipped on.
Well, I can, I can understand them talking about costs, but, I mean, we're talking about an intersection on East West Highway that go, that transects with another state road in the middle of a small town that has, I don't know, I think, what are there, six, seven different places coming in, like, all, all different things happening there. If there was any place where there was a value to having a functional, well-timed intersection, that would be it. Just the, the time alone lost, I mean, doing just a study, this is your, this is your area, and the economics of the time lost of people sitting in traffic, like, what's the value of that to the state and the county where people are sitting in traffic and spewing carbon emissions instead of working? So it would, so it would be, it would be great if we could get something a little bit better than that. The crosswalks.
Uh huh.
So where, where are crosswalks here? Who says pedestrian?
It would be part of, it would be part of the MOU discussion. The, we did have some discussion about that. The standards for, you know, meeting the warrants are important, and I think to State Highway, and I, and we certainly have to follow state law as well. We had quite a discussion about innovative techniques that could be used on sidewalks, on crosswalks. While it's not something that, some of the lighting and those kinds of things are things not, that they might not do if somebody else put the money forward, or if there was a grant or something, they might be more allowing of that. I think we have a lot more discussion to do on that, but it was, it was a, it was an amiable discussion, I think, about, you know, how we would work together on crosswalks.
It's good, because I almost got hit in the crosswalk today at Elm and Ethan Allen. I actually waited for a clearing and a guy came out and around, and I was in the middle of the crosswalk, and instead of slowing down, when he saw me, he sped up so he could get there sort of faster than I would step out into the intersection, and it happens a lot, and so it's, it's a critical safety issue for the people who live in the town. So SHA will not agree to never widen Maryland 410, I, I understand that, and I didn't expect that they would make that agreement. If they did make it, it'd be as good as the Indian Treaties of the 1800s. And, and I already commented on the other one. So again, thanks, I know I'm being sort of snarky, which isn't really directed at you, I'm just in that kind of a mood. I do really appreciate everything that you guys did and anything that you could do to help get some more concrete action around a few of those pieces, make sure that the crosswalks are good, and try to help us to resolve the signaling and coordination issues going into the junction would be really great. Thank you so much.
I just, I know other people want to talk, I just want to get a clarification on one point about the discussion on the signal timing and the, and the possibility of the county taking them over and the need for State Highway to spend money before the county will take them over. We've been aware of that difficult, that ongoing difficulty for probably getting close to 10 years now. My sense is that the only traffic lights in Montgomery County that aren't in the Montgomery County system are ones in Tacoma Park.
That's right.
Because it used to be Tacoma Park and downtown Rockville, and I know the ones in Rockville are now, is part of the county system. So I almost see it as kind of a equity issue that we're, we're orphaned on this, and so if, if need be, I think we could make some political arguments in the right places at the right times to try and get some money loose for that.
That may be, and, and in fact, I actually think the county owes some, some, some on that. I mean, I do think that it's an interesting thing that the county is just waiting for State Highway to do it.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. What is the, what is the kind of range? You said you were surprised by the magnitude of the cost, I'm just curious what the cost was.
I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember what it was. I'd have to go back and look at my notes when I was, when I was talking with the folks, but, you know, it's, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for just little short segments of, of the upgrade. It's, it's much more expensive than normal street work or utility line work.
I, I agree with Bruce. I think if we get a number, then our friends on the Ways and Means Committee perhaps could figure out a way to get money, you know, articulated in a way for this project.
And it could also be the Transportation Subcommittee, the Approach Preparations Committee.
I just want to understand a little bit about the perpetual easement and the legal ramifications. This doesn't in any way, you know, if they do that for a certain number of years- This doesn't in any way, you know, if they do that for a certain number of years, if we have this arrangement with them for 20 years, it doesn't then automatically convey ownership or anything like that? They don't then have a, can't stake a claim to say that they own the road at that point?
No, actually, it's the opposite. For example, one of the elements of a prescriptive easement is it has to be against the wishes of the other owner. It can't be by consent, by agreement. So, no, a 20-year agreement wouldn't affect that, and we can even write into our agreement something about that it's not to be, it's not to be used, interpreted, or precedent in that direction.
Thanks. That was one of my big questions, and one of the questions I got from constituents, they were concerned that this might mean that the state could have a claim later, so to hear that that's not the case is great, I appreciate that, thank you for structuring it that way. The second question I have, has there been any progress on actual proof around the city's ownership? Now, Neil Peterson stated it publicly, so that's clearly something, but there was some idea that there was maybe documents, so it would just be nice to have those documents so that when the state changed their mind later on about who owns it, we might have some proof of that. Was there, is there anything around that?
In the-
Or are they willing to sign something that clearly states that we do own those things?
No, there's some information in your package about what we've learned so far about ownership or how these roads came to be. I think that, you know, I give a lot of appreciation to historic Tacoma for getting state highway to knock loose some of its old documents. Frankly, the only thing that it showed is that the one block next to this building was actually sold by the city to state, to the state for $2,000 in the 30s to connect the roads as they made 410, a highway. The rest of the information, there doesn't seem to be anything that shows agreements, transactions of any kind.
Well, what it doesn't show is deeds. What clearly is there is the kind of subdivision process that leads to dedicating, you know, certain rights of ways to the public use, and for most of history, that was to the municipality, not to the state. It's only when state highway, you know, took over that we're talking about this kind of ambiguity. So, we, you know, we feel that we have as much of an argument as we ever did, that the state doesn't own most of what's in Tacoma Park, but we, with this document, will try to, you know, clarify authority in a way that we haven't before.
Okay. And then, was there anything in terms of any more specificity around pedestrian or sidewalks in particular? Was there any discussion about, because there's this weird thing about state highways not feeling like they are responsible for the maintenance of sidewalks, which might make sense with 99% of highway miles, because there are no sidewalks on those, but it's a little different in places like this.
We did discuss sidewalks to some extent. The, this agreement really does not, is talking about the maintenance primarily of the pavement portion of 410. The standard that, kind of, we've been operating with recently, which is that state highway will build sidewalks when they're building the roads, is it, and then municipality or jurisdiction is to maintain them after that continues. But we did discuss that because anytime they do significant changes to the roadway, they need to bring up the adjacent sidewalks to ADA standards, means that they are going around and doing some more significant ADA improvements as they're doing on New Hampshire Avenue, or just down on New Hampshire Avenue. So, it's one of these kind of, we're going to need to spell that out, but I think that ultimately, it'll be the city responsible for the sidewalks.
With one exception, and that is, they also talked about ADA compliance, and that it sounds like this SHA does have a program for that along state roads, and so, not that we-
We're not going to take it away from them.
Yeah, we certainly didn't get into the details of it, but there's certainly ADA compliance issues that we can make, you know, exploit to some extent.
And the 7800 block of Carroll Avenue, residents in that area don't have any concern with that switch over, it's right near the college, right? Are there no residential houses, or?
No, this is by Long Branch.
Okay.
This is the block near Long Branch, and it's, we've not had any, in all the discussion, the idea of just having some sense of who should be taking care of it, and since it's just one block, it did make sense in the past that state highway do that.
And then my last thing, another question, but just a comment, I do feel whether it's a single MOU or multiple MOUs, that that should come back from the council, to the council. I realize I may or may not be on the council at that time, but I think we should leave here with clarity about the council's opinion on that by a motion or straw vote, and it's not because I don't have confidence in the city staff, but more that I think it's a very sensitive public issue, and it's something that we should make sure that people are aware of, and it should be discussed publicly.
If I could just speak to that for a minute, I totally agree that that's very important, that we would start, the tonight's vote is to see whether the big picture is along the lines the council wishes staff to try to negotiate with SHA, and then we would have that negotiation, but no documents could be executed without coming back to council for approval of the group of documents.
Wait, I just heard in the beginning points-
Yeah, I guess I had a different, I had a different interpretation, I'm sorry. But one of the things that we had discussed, and I think, you know, what your direction gives is fine either way, but is that with the longstanding discussion and with the idea of the elections coming up, that the more that we can get with the sitting body, the better, so that we know, you know, where we're going with this, and that it's, and it meets your approval, because we've been living it for some time. So, again, I think, I'm open to whichever way the council wishes to go on this, but I'm also looking at the calendar and how that functions.
Right, so I just think that, I agree that a lot of the details that Councilmember Clay talked about, and I'd love to comment on, I refrain from because I think they are in the details of the MOU discussion, but I think it's of whether, whoever's sitting up here, that it's important that it come back to the council in a public forum, and I know that we have been given some policy direction, but I'm relatively confident that whoever's sitting in the seat will probably be okay with that policy direction, but would want to have the discussion in a public process for the MOU.
So, the reason I said as strongly as I did is that, again, my vision for this is that the easement will not be entered into, and that has to be authorized by the council as a legal document without the MOUs having been agreed to. So that because they're so interconnected, it seemed to me it would come back to the council, but I certainly understand the concern that it would be a different council.
I think, I'd venture to say there will be unanimous support, the dais that come back to us in the end for review and approval.
So, we'll need to work on scheduling discussions.
One other quick point, if I could, the other issue I think is this question of detail, that the more the MOUs are sort of general, like, how do we make decisions about permitting, rather than specific, like, exactly what kind of lighting do we want on the crosswalks, you know, the quicker the MOUs probably can be resolved. But if we, if the will of the council is for us to get into the weeds on a lot of these details, which we might, I think it would take longer to work this through.
And I think the desire would be to have a process, except if the process says, "State highway decide."
Yes.
Then it doesn't work so well, right?
I don't think that's-
So that's the crux.
Yeah, I don't think that was the idea.
Yeah, I think a lot could come back with the general language, and that would be fairly quick, and if there's more details to work out, then deal with it.
One of the things that, you know, I think speaks to all of, everybody's concern about knowing who's responsible, is the rapidity to which the attorney for state highway has been working on this. I mean, she really has been quite responsive, and I think, you know, if we are to come back with, you know, what's our, what is the, what are those process steps? How do we work together? It may be able to be done relatively quickly.
Good. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm happy with what I'm hearing. I do think that the lights issued, particularly if the only lights not in the county system in Tacoma Park, now's a good time to address that, so I don't know if that was one of your intent when you went back to address that, but I'd like to see it be part of your, just in as a general, more even as a general issue, that like, you know, hey, we're still hanging out here with lights from the old days. Sue, the perpetual easement, perpetual sounds like it never stops, of course, and is that the intent? That it doesn't have to be, not from a legal perspective, it doesn't have to be tended to over time, and it's just sitting there, or is there, is it conceivable that this easement could stop or be removed in some way? And if so, who would do that?
I think that'll be in the drafting, because I think that in general, perpetual easement does mean it's indefinite, that it could go on, on and on and on. If we want to write into that something more conditioned on the MOUs being abided by, or-
Okay, so that's possible.
I think so, yeah. I think that we should, mainly it's an easement. Perpetual is this word that just says that it's not going to be just a two-year event or a 10-year event or a 50-year event.
Okay. Well, I'm, I think that that's an important aspect, is have it be conditional based on the MOUs being respected, because that's what our concerns will be. If we come to agreements that we're acting in partnership with the state for the well-being of the road and our citizens, then we want to make sure that the well-being of the road and our citizens is upheld, and if it's not, we need some, something way to say, huh, sorry, you know, the deal's not working out.
Councilmember Schultz.
The only question that remains, the only question that remains in my mind, and by the way, I do accept the direction in which Councilmember Wright was going on this, I do think it needs to come back to the city council unquestionably. I just don't think that's a burden that staff deserves to have to carry. My question really is, is the iterative process of these MOUs, and I think the natural instinct of fear is, is that we get some of them agreed to, and then there's a change in administration in the SHA, and all of a sudden, a new person comes on and says, well, you know, we're not going to do the following MOU, and I just wonder if it's, is there any way, or does it make sense, this is really an open question, I don't know, to sort of tie the MOUs together to make them contingent on each other, that none of them are effective until all of them are effective, so that somebody in the SHA who all of a sudden finds Jesus doesn't decide that he's, can't go forward anymore?
Well, I think that, you know, as we've talked about, there's some conditions that can be put on it. We certainly, in all of the discussions, talked about these being interrelated, and that when we file the documents, you know, if there's any kind of conveyance, like with Flower Avenue or whatever, that it references these MOUs, so it's in varieties of places and it's well documented, it's not something that somebody loses in a file, and forgets and changes their mind over time. So I think we were very thoughtful in going into this, that it would be very clear so that when the people who are in the room are gone, it's still very clear what the provisions are.
That's right. That's the key, because the people in the room will be gone at some point.
Some point, yeah.
As we've seen with what about community use of the Piney Branch Elementary School and pool, and what were the agreements when the property was transferred, and what happened with the Tacoma Metro development, and what, you know, wasn't there a permanent park easement, and this, that, and it was like, well, gee, we think there was this legislative intent, but we can't find it. And so, putting it in multiple places with arrows pointing at them is prudent. Councilmember Snipper.
Mayor, I agree with what's been said before, and certainly support the direction we're moving, but I have a question about changes. Will there be provisions in there to allow changes? If we decide to change something at the junction, are we going to be, are our hands tied with it, or, you know, what's, what will be the process for working through things like that?
I think that that was, as Sue mentioned, I mean, the whole concept about focusing about how we work together, you know, what are these processes, and that sometimes staying away from some of the details can be useful, especially as technology changes, or, you know, as roads change, you know, if we come up with some new designs or something, that we recognize how we work together and talk it out.
It sounds like we're happy with the direction that things are going, that we want drafting to move forward, that we're happy that all of these different pieces are part of one larger package, and that staff has the direction to bring things back to the council in as timely a fashion as you can, and that that will get us where we need to go more quickly and serve everyone's needs, and that if there's some pieces of it that take a little longer, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, or we'll cross that road when we come to it, and hopefully get this taken care of relatively rapidly. Is there any further direction that you need?
No, I mean, I think we'll go back, I would assume though that we would not be back on October 10.
That's probably the case, we'll, but we'll see if we can get something back still on October.
Okay, I hope so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the work on this so far, and may the cooperative spirit with state highway continue. We will now go to the last item. I'll note that Councilmember Schultz left, he's getting ready for various services tomorrow and needed to leave, was sorry to have to do so. This item is the discussion placing an advisory question on the ballot regarding reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and I wanted to go first to Councilmember Wright, since he's the one who asked that this be on here.
I'm glad that we are going to have this conversation. I do think it would be good to hear from the city attorney, just because she has some advice for us about both the nature of referendum and whether they can be binding, advisory, and then as well, also about what can be in the charter versus in legislative legislation. So I think it'd be helpful to hear from the city attorney, kind of give us the quick overview on that.
Thank you. This is also in the packet, it's not a confidential memorandum, it's useful for the community to understand this basic issue. We do have provision in our charter for advisory referenda, it's unusual, it's not common to municipal charters, but we do allow certain questions to be put to the community that will not then be binding on the city council. And the two ways that that can happen is either a charter amendment, or more of a legislative initiative. In this particular idea that Councilmember Wright puts forward on greenhouse gases, it's the opinion of our office of the city attorney, that this is less a charter amendment kind of item and more a legislative initiative. It's really putting into place something that would regulate the conduct of the community and end of the city. It's not the kind of thing that would be in a charter. A charter generally has process issues for how to structure the city government, how elections are held, what kind of authority the city council members have, what the staff authority is, how finances are handled, et cetera. That's the kind of document a charter is, and there's several court cases that look at that carefully and define that, and are clear that the kind of- clear that the kind of item that is before us with this guest, the, I'm sorry, I'm losing my continuity here, but what has been proposed here is not the kind of thing that would normally be in a charter, but more is that, is legislative. Process-wise, the charter makes it very clear that the way to get it to a straw vote by the community is that the city council would need to vote on a resolution, asking that it be put on the ballot. And at the time of that resolution, the very specific language that the community is going to vote on has to be part of that resolution. And it's my understanding from the city clerk, that in our case, October 3 would be the deadline for making that decision if such a resolution were to be put in front of the council.
So we would, if we wanted to use language similar to this, we might take out the beginning sections about adding section 601 to the charter and put something more in there that said, something along the lines of, the city council should pass ordinances that seek to continuously significantly reduce, and yada, yada, on in that direction. We wouldn't want, we wouldn't have a specific site or place in the charter that we're suggesting.
Exactly. And that type of discussion is in the next to last paragraph of the legal memo.
And just so I'm clear, a charter item would be something like, if we wanted to propose, not to make the city manager nervous, but if we wanted to propose a change to the structure of the city government, you know, away from a city manager model to a strong mayor model or something like that, that would be the type of thing we would put in the charter, charter implications. But that's something that is really, something that would reside in ordinance would be a legislative matter.
Exactly.
My position would be that we seek to have an advisory referendum around of legislative nature. I think this language is pretty close to what we want. I know we got some comments about potentially having something more specific. I think we want to be careful that we give future councils flexibility in how to implement this. I think if we were to put specific numbers in there that required specific costs to the city, then we should also put in some specific source of revenue. One of the problems I have with referenda that occur, there's been a number of them in the state of California, no offense, Councilmember Clay, which kind of separates.
No offense to all of the Californians on the dais.
Yes. Me too. That's true, but the other council members don't cite wonderful things about California as much as Councilmember Clay does.
California wasn't our ideas.
Right, right. But you're saying that California was.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Where there have been situations where they basically ask people, do you want more service, and do you want lower taxes? And they kind of separate those two issues. So I think if we were going to be more specific than this around requirement of what would be done in the future, or specific targets, that we should also be specific about dollar amounts associated with it.
If I could speak to that just very briefly, in a way, there's a difference, because the initiative that we, that you're talking about in California are binding. Those are ones that really can say to the government, you have to fund X. This type, which is the only type that would be legal in Maryland, is a straw vote. It does not bind the city council to do anything.
Right, it's still advisory, but if in theory, we're asking residents to say, hey, would you like this? And we're being very specific about what the city's going to do and the cost that they would incur if the city council asked for it, I think we, it behooves us also to put into that same recommendation where the costs are, you know, where the costs are going to be paid for, where's the revenue going to come from? That's all I'm saying.
My only caution, just a friendly suggestion, is that you have to remember this has to be on a ballot. So it's not going to be a lengthy discussion of policy, most likely. It's going to have to be a question.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I think we should leave it in a less descriptive or prescriptive form here, as it is here. But if one were, because there have been comments from the public, that we should actually be more specific, that we should actually put some specific goal or target into the advisory document, I don't think we should do that unless we're also going to have to put a commensurate revenue source in. That's my view. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make two quick comments, and then I know a number of colleagues have some points to make. In reference to yours about the California model, I just want to say that, as I started thinking about this possibility, the first thought that came to my mind was, gee, we don't want, nobody wants to be pinned down, because I could see the potential, if the state economy gets worse, that there are various mandates that come down from the state to the localities that can affect us, the biggest one being the potential for the state to hand off all or a portion of teacher pensions to the county. If they do that, then there's the potential for the county to say, whoops, we don't have money, we're forced to do this, and look to the municipalities, and we could lose our rebate, and the state could say, and we're, we've got difficulties, and there go the rest of highway user funds, and there goes police aid, and all of a sudden, the city is facing three and a half million dollars less than we have in the current budget year. And if we had prescriptive direction on where to go, we would have much less flexibility. So that's where I started my thinking. And then I thought, but this is the kind of question that I would imagine that all of us on the dais and most people in the city would say, yes, of course, we want this to happen. And then people going back and saying, well, didn't we have a greenhouse gas reduction plan in 2000, and why didn't we do more? And I was thinking about what has been done and what hasn't been done, and recognizing the difficulty in doing all of this. And I looked back at the 2000 report, and I took a little bit of information from it that hadn't necessarily stuck with me from 11 years ago, when I was part of the group that put that report together. And it's the fact that the municipal government piece of greenhouse gas reduction, that the municipal government, everything that we do with vehicles, with buildings, with paying for streetlights, all of these things amount to one-half of 1% of community energy use. And so, we've been doing an awful lot toward reducing energy use and decreasing greenhouse gases from that one-half of 1%. And, you know, you can run down the whole list of the many things that we have done with the strict tree ordinance and pushing for more bus routes to get more people on transit, the sidewalk discussions that we've had recently about pedestrian use, more hybrid vehicles, the Flower Avenue Green Street project, the solar panel installation on this and other roofs, the LEED certification that we've had in doing renovation and remodeling projects, where we've moved from no LEED certification to pretty high LEED certification levels. And 100% wind power and the effort, we've had some lack of success in things like moving to get street control over our streetlights and reduce costs on those, or municipal energy authority. So that there are all these things that we've done toward that half of, one-half of 1%. But when you look at the rest of greenhouse gas reduction, it's all in the area of residential and commercial and transportation, not including through traffic. And those are each approximately a third. So I thought, okay, we've been trying to lead by example, but the bang for the buck is going to be in getting these other sectors to reduce. And we've had some discussions about how we can tell people what to do, or we can't tell people what to do. And that's the area where I think a lot needs to be done. And so, what I came out with at the other end of my thinking about this was, if we're going to do something that's meaningful for greenhouse gas reduction in the city, it's going to have to be a community effort, and it's going to have to be much wider than just what the city can do with our budgets and our purchasing on particular things. I think we've done a pretty good job, but it covers so little of what is actually going into the problem. And so, I thought, gee, what this really points to is the discussion that's on the agenda for next week about what's the direction, what are the deliverables for the sustainability coordinator. It clarified in my mind that it would seem that the sustainability coordinator should be more outwardly focused on the larger community to try and get these kind of efforts done. So I just wanted to say that that was my thinking process in this, because I thought it's something that this council will want to do, to say, we have that commitment. I know that there's been the pushback from various committees, that they don't feel like we follow through on this, and I think that the sustainability coordinator is a chance to do this and to take it out to the wider community. And I think that whatever we put on the ballot, most people will respond, yes, we want this. And so, it's going to be up to the next council to implement that vision in a more meaningful Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a hard act to follow, but I thank you. I think most people are going to vote yes on this, unless part of the question is, has to do with cost, and then they may not vote yes. But on a different tack, Susan, you have been with the city, and part of your historical knowledge is valuable, I think, to us here on the council. I recall back many years ago, several years ago, we're not that old, there was a request to put a, an advisory question on the ballot regarding gun control. And at that time, I believe what we heard back from your office was that advisory questions were, I used the word illegal, I'm not sure that's exactly what you said, but weren't something that we had an option to do. Is this different than that, or what's changed?
There are some similarities. That was a charter amendment that was proposed, and so it has the problems that I've, that we've been discussing about this being more legislative than that. What's different about gun control is it's preempted entirely, almost entirely, by state law, so that there was actually a court case involving the gun control law, where a judge threw it out.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, but we were talking about just, you know, the advisory question on the ballot, and.
Well, the other thing that changed is that we changed our own charter to specifically authorize advisory ballots. That didn't exist back then.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. First, I want to say that there are many things that I like about California, but two complete failures are Proposition 13 and the ballot initiative process. So I wouldn't want to replicate either of those in any way. I've said, over the six years that I've been on the council, that I don't believe in ballot box zoning, I don't believe in ballot box budgeting, and I won't support the advisory question. The reasons are endless, but I'll try to hit on a few of them. One of them that was talked about is, well, you know, should you assign then, you know, a cost to a measure? But the thing is, when you're here participating in the council, you're weighing a lot of different things, and you can't, I think it's fair to the public to single out an issue and say, hey, would you like this? Even if you say it's going to cost $800,000, because the whole process up here, where we make policy decisions and budget decisions together, is involved in a trade-off of those things. And you can't extract one and ask the public a question about it, and then come back to the process that we go through in terms of policymaking and budget-making, and I think, give fair voice to all the variety of different activities that we engage in. So, you know, we're looking at the environmental question tonight, which, you know, in my mind, also brings us back to the issue of like, so what is it that we're looking at on the budget? Well, why aren't we looking at whether or not we're going to do life skills? Let's do an advisory question about whether or not we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether or not we do, whether or not we do life skills. But the fact is, you know, if we just put out a measure on the environment, we don't get to, we don't get to talk about those trade-offs, how much we expend on them in terms of our staff time and effort, in terms of our budget policy. And I think that the place to have that conversation is here, and not through an advisory ballot initiative. I also think that when we're, when we're looking at this issue, I think Councilmember Siemens said, oh, I think everyone's going to vote yes on it. I don't need to put out an advisory ballot initiative on the environment to know that people in Tacoma Park support the environment. And I know that they do, and the, you know, the issue, it still has to come back to the council to create the legislative process to make it happen. And it's not the fact that we don't have a ballot initiative on the ballot that's keeping that from happening. It's, clearly, it's not for a lack of putting together committees to study items. Last week, Councilmember Siemens gave me something about the Recreation Department from, was that from the '90s that you gave that to me? And I laughed, because one of the items of uses of the Recreation Department was five meetings of the Tacoma Junction Task Force. So, you know, putting that out on the ballot, I don't think that that's going to, I don't think that that's going to make a difference for us. Some people have said that if we put out a ballot initiative, that more people will come and vote.
Excuse me, Councilmember Clay, that Tacoma Junction Task Force was actually in the 1980s.
Is that where, the booklet that you gave me was from the 80s? Yeah. So, thank you. So, you know, I don't think that we need a ballot initiative to encourage more people to vote. If we want more people to vote, we need to get more people to run for office, have them talk about their competing ideas, and then get people out to vote on those, on those issues. And that's what I think will get people engaged in the electoral process. And I think we really do a disservice to people if we put this out as a ballot initiative, and then people voted for it, and then we came back here and started making the political trade-offs, it didn't get the, it didn't get the hearing essentially, that the people who had voted on it thought that it would get. And I could go on, but it's 10:51, so if you want more reasons why I'm opposed to this, you can email me, and I'll tell you in an email.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Colleen, because you hit on all but one of my points. I can't believe, thank you, that's where I was going, that at least I didn't have to say ditto, or whatever. Okay. You know, I like the idea, just not how we're doing it. I don't, I don't think putting it on the ballot's the way to go. Because I think we run the possibility that if we have a question on the ballot that's quite specific, suppose it just focuses on greenhouse gases, then some people will oppose it because they want it to be much broader, and they will think that this is, you know, limiting it. Others might oppose it because of the specifics of how we do the funding. They may say, well, I don't want it funded that way. So we'll have, we could have a, we could have a ballot question that then gets defeated because of these other things, not because people aren't concerned about the environment in Tacoma Park, which, as you indicated, is, would be hard to believe. So I would rather do this another way, basically, put it in the strategic plan, let our environmental coordinator work on it, et cetera, rather than a ballot question.
Councilmember Robinson.
I think it was, where I thought you were going, Mayor Williams, was the maintenance of effort issue at the county, when you said that be careful of what you commit to, because it might sting you later on. And I remember Councilmember Elrich last week talking about the. the maintenance of effort as regards to school funding, and how difficult that was to unwind. And when Terry said, when Councilmember Siemens said he expected everyone to vote yes, I thought you meant everyone here on the dais, but I guess maybe you meant everyone who would come down to vote at the ballot box. Is that correct?
I was actually just quoting Mayor Williams, who said that earlier.
Oh. And I would, I would hate to see something, just a feel-good question on the, if we were going to put something on the ballot. I'd like it to have some, something that people would have to really think about before they voted yes or no on it. Something that was, I won't say divisive, but something that was really important. And the only thing I can think about that's not feel-good as regards the environmental aspects is to do something kind of radical along the lines of Lebanon, New York, where they equated energy and heat loss with waste. And by doing that, they equated it with solid waste, in fact. And by doing that, they were able to bring heat loss in individuals' homes in the community under the aegis of the same kind of solid waste service delivery that they provided, picking up people's waste at the corner. And when they did that, they were able, because they, because they made that definition, they were able to fund environmental upgrades, energy efficiency upgrades, in people's homes through the city, using municipal funding, and it would, on a revolving loan fund, and that money would come back. That's a very, it was, it's very potent in Lebanon, New York, as a way to get people to upgrade their homes. And one of our county council members picked up on that and tried to run with it here in Montgomery County. Now, I can't remember his name, not Leventhal...
Berliner.
Berliner, yes. George, Roger Berliner tried to pick up on that and institute it in Montgomery County, but he didn't follow this energy and heat loss equals waste formula in doing so, and I think that's why it's not going to go anywhere. So that's a kind of a, it's a power that would, that would be given to the city. And it's something that people may or may not think is important. It could have, it could have really real ramifications. If, if we had that authority, or if we had, if we made that definition, which has precedent, we might be able to do some really dramatic moves in reducing, reducing energy loss and heat loss by having that authority. I don't know if people would vote yes or no on that, if they really understood what that was about. But that's the kind of wording, and I don't think it would take much to change the proposed wording to include that kind of thing. In fact, where's the wording that you put in here? Here we go. Oops. On the first page of the memorandum from Silver, Pearlman, Sigmund, and Tele, in the second portion of the first paragraph there of the draft, draft language, "To address climate change, have the power to implement greenhouse gas reduction programs that target municipal, et cetera." If it could say something like, "And equate heat and energy loss with solid waste," then it could have some teeth and give people something real to vote on. As it is, I don't think, I think it's too, it's kind of too feel-good. And as Ruben mentioned, it might just bring up other divisions in the community that muddy the issue.
Councilmember Wright.
So I think the issue here, I am very sympathetic to Colleen and Ruben's point that, sorry, thank you, Councilman Robinson, that you're taking this in the context of no other trade-off, sort of, that you're not having a full discussion. And what I like about this ordinance, and why I think it's, or the, referring in the way it's worded, is that what it's asking us to do is commit to having a scorecard around greenhouse gas, and what I think is the most critical issue, or one of the most critical issues by far of our time. And then to, that will force us and hold our feet to the fire around how we're doing against that, and actually be able to have the discussion and trade-off discussion about how much progress we want to make on that, what it's going to cost us, in the context of every other full, the full discussion. And that's what the future councils have to do. And the fact that we had this greenhouse gas plan in the, in the past, we didn't do enough on it, but we did some stuff. And now it's brought up and used as a tool to hold the council more accountable, to push us forward. And so I see this, to Robert's point, is part of a larger package. It has to do with continuing the green deal for Tacoma Park. We've made great strides, and the city in and of itself has made amazing efforts around, on its own, reducing its carbon footprint, greenhouse gas emissions, and being more environmentally conscious. But we have to do more as a city, and we need a marker by which we hold ourselves accountable. And we, I think it behooves us to ask the residents if they want that marker. And to Bruce's point, it's, it is part of the conversation. It engages people in realizing that they have a responsibility also, that it's not just the city government. So I would hope that we could put this on the, that we would vote to put this on the ballot. I appreciate the spirit of your suggestion, Councilmember Robinson, but I think that gets very prescriptive and says to the future council, "This is the way you should do it." And I think that's not what we want to do. We want to say, "We should have a measure. We should know what our, where our speedometer is on where we're going," and then allow future councils to make the trade-offs around exactly how they're going to implement that, how they're going to incentivize people, how much money they're going to spend on it, what the trade-offs are. So I would hope that my fellow council colleagues would support putting this on the ballot. I think it is of a different nature and of a greater magnitude than just about any other issue we face.
One other thought that I had that I neglected to mention was that the 2000 plan came out of the city's membership in ICLI, the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. And that's, we're still ICLI members. I know that the Public Works Director continues to get information and I think possibly attend some of their meetings. I still get the emails. I was the council liaison to ICLI for a number of years and attended many of those conferences. At some point, my council colleagues basically said, "You don't get all the fun. We want to do that, too." And some other ones got involved. Those folks are no longer on the council, and my sense is that there isn't a, an engagement by the council on our membership in ICLI. And what ICLI does is help with all of these guideposts and these measurements, and working through and saying, "Here's how other people do it. Here's how other municipal and county governments work through this. Here's some best practices. We can help you through this. They supply software to be able to do it." I think it might be in our best interests to kind of reevaluate our engagement with ICLI, and I would imagine that we would want to increase that level of engagement and take better advantage of some of the things that they offer. And that may go some way toward helping us focus on the greenhouse gas reduction aspect of sustainability in environment, in the environmental area, and also the economic area. I'm not sure that that particularly gets to the question that we have before us, which is, do we want to put the ballot question on or not? And I think it's clear that some folks do and some folks don't.
Does that mean we're going to vote?
We could, we could do a straw vote of the six of us here, with the potential for a three to three tie.
Well, I would suggest that we do the vote, and the mayor withhold his vote unless it's needed for a tiebreaker.
But that's not, that's not the way we do it. I get a vote.
I would just point out, Terry, what you're proposing, given that there's six of us, is that we will not need Bruce in that. So it doesn't make sense.
Okay, I always thought the suggestion, let's just go ahead and vote.
So how many people want to put it on the ballot? And how many people don't want to put it on the ballot? It's three to three. So I would, I would say that it's unresolved, and we would need to, I would propose that, that specific language be circulated this week, and if we're going to put it on the ballot, we'll have to do it next week. And we'll, we'll make that an agenda item for next week, and we'll see if we want to put it on the ballot, because we don't have a clear sense. And I think that's the only fair way to do it.
Sure.
And lobby, lobby colleagues in the meantime. Any other comments? We're adjourned.